Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for December 2nd, uh, 2020. Uh, just to remind people, uh, who's on the board, my name's Melinda Collins. We also have Michael Zulis, Katie Conlin, Arthur Doyle, and Richard Wells. Our town administrator, uh, Michael Dennehy is joining us and our executive administrative assistant, Hillary Waite, um, and, uh, we also have some, some, uh, guests from RCN who we'll introduce in, uh, a few minutes. And some staff, Chase Berkeley, who's our DPW director is also on right now. You'll be seeing other staff later who will introduce. Um, we also want to remind people that, um, at the, uh, the beginning of a meeting, we, we should be alerting you to the fact that on March 20th, uh, 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. So the, um, executive order relieves public bodies from the requirement to meet in a physical space in order to protect people's health and to provide a platform such as Zoom. Uh, in our case, we're also on television and you can, uh, look at the agenda in order to uh, have the Zoom credentials and also to call in on your phone. Um, so that being said, uh, we also will remind you that our votes are by roll call and, um, and that we make every effort to make sure that, that meetings are accessible. So, thank you very much. If people, uh, could please join the board in the pledge of allegiance, we would appreciate it. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, now we move on to public comment. And, um, so in order to participate in public comment, if, um, users who are using Zoom on their computers move down to the bottom of the screen with, uh, their, their little icon, they can raise their hand. If you're on the phone, you want to press star nine, uh, in order to raise your hand. And then when you're, um, recognized on the phone, you press star six to toggle on and off mute. And it can, it can take a, a couple of seconds. So give yourself a moment, uh, if you, if you're using your phone. I've had that experience. So, um, if, um, anyone would like to participate in, uh, public comment, please raise your hand now. I don't see anyone here. I do believe that there is a member of the board who would like to, uh, participate in public comment, uh, as a resident. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
So thank you and thank you for your patience on this. I believe in my thirty-six and a half years of service to town, I think it's the first time I've ever spoken at public comment at all. Um, so I thank you for this. Um, as we know, we're entering the holidays and the holidays are always a season of the year where those who have less than many in life as far as work, employment, finances, health, and I, as you know, I'll know I could go on, but uh, for several years now, I've been involved as a volunteer at a location. You were actually there last year, Madam Chair, uh, my brother's keeper in Stoneville. Um, my brother's keeper's mission began providing furniture and things like that to, uh, people in need, people who are, had no housing, had no homes, were burnt out, so many things. The, with the COVID pandemic upon us, they've expanded into food security and food service, we're running meals on a daily basis to so many. But one of the biggest things that they do each year is they clean out their furniture warehouse and they turn it into what they named a huge Santa's workshop and they provide Christmas to over fourteen thousand people normally in the metro Boston area, including our community. And I don't want to tell many stories, but I've always been touched by a story that was shared with me by a resident who I ran into there two years ago, who had just come back, was doing deliveries of Christmas presents to, um, families that had made requests and this day, that person was assigned to the town of Milton and had been doing deliveries in Milton. In his mind, it was beyond anything he ever could have imagined, but my brother's keeper does in fact serve many homes in this community. This year, things are reimagined because of COVID and Santa's workshop is closed and it's being done virtually. You go online and they have, what I've been told, enough to fill more than seventeen thousand requests already. And that's just an amazing thing. As, uh, you know, Madam Chair, I mentioned to you a thing that struck me early, at the end of two years ago, was that it's one thing to ask for gifts for your family, it's another thing to ask especially for your children. But imagine suffering from food insecurity and you get food provided and you don't even have the utensils to be able to cook it in your kitchen. And it was not that long ago, it was early last year that I realized that one of the things that people would ask for that they did not have at my brother's keeper, something as simple as a crock pot to prepare a meal, something that's beyond the realization of most of us. So as I told you and others who were with us last year when I left, this year I was going to start an initiative to, um, collect crock pots as gifts and deliver them to my brother's keeper. So the help of Deacon Dan Sullivan from St. Agatha's Parish, who's really known as the wizard behind the curtain, is my brother's keeper because he and his wife and children coordinate all the deliveries, packages, wrapping, and so many things I can't even describe. What I have undertaken this week is a, is an effort here in town, um, to collect between fifty and seventy-five new crock pots. Um, wrap, because this year it's usually is, you know, part of the volunteer efforts to get on shop and wrap the presents because of COVID. They're asking for everything this year to be shopped online and wrapped and then delivered. So I've asked for fifty to seventy-five crock pots, which I will collect on Saturday, the Saturday, and deliver it to them on Saturday to be disseminated to the families. I wanted to go for a hundred, but I didn't want to be greedy. And I, I, I want to say right now, just in the few days that I put this out on social media, I'm already halfway there from residents of this town who, people just reached out, writing stories, just their father, their mother, their neighbor. Um, and I'm not surprised. It's just something that I was. So this Saturday, for anyone who's listening, if you could purchase, no frills, I'm not looking for like the two hundred dollar crock pot, just a crock pot that you can get in any Walgreens, CVS. I went to Target today and stole and they had plenty of them, pulls, all of them. Um, a crock pot, a new crock pot wrapped, just wrapped in wrapping paper, no bows, because they go into a big shipping thing. So just wrapped in wrapping paper. And I will be on the side of town hall in my truck this Saturday between eleven and one. Um, you can just pull up, I'll put a table behind the truck. You don't even have to get out, just put the crock pot on the table, have a sign on it, then I'll load them in the truck and I will deliver all of them uh, to my brother's keeper for distribution to families on Saturday afternoons. Thank you for your time on that. If, if anyone has any questions, it's on my social, on my Richard Wells Facebook page, it's my friends at Richard Wells page, which I thank Brian Kelly and Lyndley and so many for doing this, helping me in this. But thank you for the time on that. And I think that to help people who are suffering from food insecurity and families who need so much this time of year is an act of humanity that I'm just honored to be able to help a little bit. So thank you for your time and thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wells. Okay, so, uh, I don't, I'm checking back to make sure in the attendees. Um, there isn't anyone. Okay. I did want to let people know that, uh, just a little while before the meeting began, I found out that, um, Fire Station Building Committee will not be in until eight thirty or so, just if anyone's watching and want, is particularly interested in that item, I'd like people to know. Also, um, I would like to move the RCN, um, item up next, uh, before COVID, because you've all been very patient and, um, and we, we'd like to, we'd like to say, uh, thank you, hear what you have to say and, um, and let you have your evening. So, um, welcome, uh, Mr. Steele, Mr. Carlson, and Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. Um, I'm Tom Steele, Vice President, Regulatory Council for RCN, and, uh, was responsible for the, uh, franchising and the commitment to, uh, serve, uh, residents of Milton. We fell a little short, uh, and let, uh, of a, a full commitment and about over, over a year ago now, we committed to, uh, expanding, uh, into, uh, nearly two thousand homes and started, uh, the construction process and worked as hard as we could. And here with me tonight to explain and update, Mike asked us to come in and give an update. The timing is good because we have good news, is, uh, Jeff Carlson. Jeff is the Senior Vice President and General Manager for our Boston Market. And Mike Campbell, who's, uh, the Senior Director for, of Operations and he, he has all the details. So I'll let Jeff, uh, speak now and turn it over to him. Thank you, Jeff.
Uh, thank you, Tom, and, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we're happy to be here, um, and we're happy to, uh, be, uh, announcing that, that we're, uh, expanding to two thousand more homes, uh, in Milton. Uh, and though this project has taken, uh, a bit more than we expected and, uh, uh, longer than we expected and hoped for, uh, but as we, as we, um, speak tonight, uh, we've already, um, activated service to about a half of those two thousand homes. And somewhere between tonight, uh, and the end of the year or the first part of January, uh, we'll be activating, uh, the second half of those two thousand homes. So again, um, we're, we're very glad to, uh, to do this, to, to provide, uh, an alternate provider uh, for high-speed data, uh, and broadband, uh, in Milton. Uh, as I said, it's, it's been a while coming, but, uh, we've gotten through, uh, a number of, uh, obstacles uh, with an awful lot of help, uh, from the city, uh, uh, in particular, Mr. Dennehy, uh, we appreciate the help. Mr. Campbell will, uh, uh, will, uh, add some folks to that, uh, thank you list. Uh, I'll hand it off to him in a minute. But, um, we will, we will be, uh, letting the folks know in Milton that we've arrived. Um, we already had some installs scheduled, uh, so over the course of the next couple of weeks, uh, in this coming month, uh, we'll be notifying people via door hangers and direct mail, uh, all the offers that we'll have for them um, available, um, right away. So, uh, very good timing, as, as Tom said. Um, it's, it's, it's nice that, you know, we can get together, you know, in the, in the midst of, uh, activation of service, which uh, has been, uh, over a year in the making, but all's well that ends well and we're very happy to be here, happy for all the help we, uh, we've been given. Uh, we're happy to have, uh, uh, a new portion of, uh, Milton, join the, uh, join the RCN network. So with that, um, I will, uh, hand it off to Mr. Campbell, uh, who was really the, uh, the champion of, uh, the extension of this network and he can provide some, some details on, uh, how we got here and who, uh, who deserves a lot of accolades with regard to, um, the heavy lifting that, that we did over the past year or so. So, Mr. Campbell, I'll let you take it from there.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board. Appreciate you giving us a few minutes of your time to, uh, give you an update on where we're at. Um, as Tom, Mr. Steele had, uh, spoken to, the, our efforts began in June of twenty nineteen, uh, to expand to the, uh, homes targeted within, uh, the town of Milton to bring some competitive edge, uh, and pricing and, uh, to the operations and to the residents of the town. Um, pleased, very pleased tonight to inform you that as Mr. Carlson had said, the construction is progressing very well. We ran into substantial delays, uh, during this year with the COVID pandemic, uh, working with, through the construction phases as all the utilities were struggling to become COVID compliant and dealing with remote workforces. Um, but what was really refreshing was working with, uh, with the town, uh, and the dedication of several people within the town to deliver those services for the residents, keep it a focus of priority. Um, Mr. Tabor is our Senior Manager of Network and Construction. Um, Mr. Dennehy and a few others in the town are probably very familiar with his name. Uh, they've spoken many times. Uh, the, uh, himself, myself and RCN would really like to acknowledge the efforts. It was very refreshing to work with a group and a town and officials who were so dedicated to making sure the project got completed. Um, at this point, we've actually completed construction on eight of the service node areas. Um, we've released and activated, uh, as the Eversource activates the power meters, uh, six of those, uh, and they've been out for, uh, customer notifications and as we've said, uh, installations are ongoing. Um, the remaining six were very confident, you know, barring any major snowstorms of, of any kind that will finish the construction this month or the very beginning of next month, at the very latest, uh, and have all of those homes for the expansion completed. Uh, this has, uh, been an incredible effort in a very condensed timeframe. And, um, Mr. Dennehy, we do appreciate, uh, all the efforts you've made with Eversource on our behalf, trying to keep a focus and priority for the residents to bring these services. Uh, and that has really helped, uh, in getting a very compressed schedule put together, um, and executed flawlessly. I also like to thank, the, uh, Electrical Inspector for the town, Dominic Fraschelli, uh, who played a major role in helping us uh, consolidate the time windows with Eversource on inspecting the power supply uh, and getting those pushed through a rather complex procedure, um, to, uh, be installed in a very short period of time, days rather than weeks, which is typical. Um, it was very motivating to our team to work with such professionals. Uh, also really like to thank the, um, Milton Police Department and Deputy Chief James O'Neil, uh, who worked diligently on our behalf. Uh, when you think about it, we had our crews out there doing construction. We had Eversource doing make-ready work. We had Verizon doing make-ready work, all associated and Comcast as well, all associated with this project in a very condensed time period. And they managed to put together coverage to, for the safety of the residents and all the workers, uh, to cover all the requests we had. Uh, that was, uh, an excellent effort. Really appreciate all they've done for us in that respect. Um, again, it's been very motivating to work on a project. I mean, to kind of put it in the scope, uh, there's fourteen service nodes. Uh, we're getting, within a couple of months, all fourteen of these constructed physically and activated, uh, and the homes released, um, to make service available. So that is quite impressive when you think about the miles, it's approximately six point three seven additional miles of fiber cable we've laid. Uh, there's approximately twenty-six point four miles of additional, uh, strand, support strand for plant in the network that was insta- being installed and thirty-seven and a half miles of coaxial cable, uh, that is being installed. Uh, and it's quite an achievement in such a short period of time. Uh, so I wanted to just highlight that we're on track. Everything is looking very positive for completion this year and really su- appreciate the motivation it's given the RCN teams and construction teams, uh, to work with professionals, uh, who have the end goal of completing the project as timely as possible. It was very refreshing. Uh, so I do thank you and entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you. Um, well, before we, we open it to questions, um, and comments from the members, I, I would like to just see if Mr. Dennehy has anything to, to, uh, to say since you, you worked on this project, um.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would just like to thank the wonderful team at RCN and reiterate, uh, their, their, um, support of the staffers in town that helped make this project get across the finish line. Um, the, the two people that haven't been acknowledged are, uh, Member Zulus and Vice Chair Conlin specifically, who sat in a room with Tom Steele and myself, uh, a little over, uh, probably sixteen months ago to get this ball rolling based on a constituent, uh, request from, uh, Tommy, Member Jeff Stone. So, um, I need, I need to thank both the members of this board that, uh, uh, brought RCN back into the room and, and got this ball rolling. So thank you to the team at RCN and, and thank you to the two members of this board that, that reactivated this conversation.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, I, I heard from, uh, from a friend recently, uh, who's very excited about this, uh, the addition of this service. So they, they, they thank you to the residents. I'll, I'll thank you. So do members have, wish to say anything or ask a question? No? Okay, well. Oh, yes, Mr. Zulus, you're, you're muted, just so you know.
I do, you, you know, Mike, uh, acknowledged Jeff Stone, but, um, to me, uh, uh, that's the most important part of this project. There's been a lot of good work done on the town side and certainly on the RCN side. But this didn't start with RCN. It didn't start with the Select Board. It didn't start with the town administration. It started with a resident who had an idea that RCN, it would be good for everyone if RCN expanded in Milton. And so, uh, so Jeff Stone deserves a lot of credit for getting the ball rolling here. As does everyone else. Everyone's done a great job once Jeff got it going, but, uh, but, uh, the resident initiative here was really, to me, the big story.
Um, well, tha- thank you, gentlemen. We, oh, yes, Ms. Conlin?
I just wanted to thank Tom. Tom, you, you were true to your word. You said it was going to take a little while and with all the slowdowns, thanks to COVID and dealing with all the utilities that, I know Mike Dennehy was very helpful to get that moving for you. So, um, I, I live on Reed's deal road. I've seen the RCN trucks down here the last month or so. They've been up and down the street and a lot of people are excited to see some options and competition in the town in this area. So thank you very much to Tom and to the full team, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Carlson and everyone at RCN. Happy to have you. You, you're already in Milton, we're happy to have you in more parts of Milton now, reaching a much broader number of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, well, yes, I, I, I echo all of those thanks and, um, maybe eventually there'll be full coverage of my neighborhood, but, uh, but tha- thank you very much and, um, uh, we appreciate you making the time this evening as well.
Thank you for having us. It's our pleasure. Looking forward to serving more people in, uh, in your city. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening.
Will Hillary take us out? Because I don't want to shut the whole thing down.
Oh, yes, yes, she, she will. You can stop your video and, and, and mute your microphone and then she'll take care of that. So you could actually leave.
Nice seeing you all again, even.
Night, Tom. Thank you.
Take good care. Thank you. Um, so now we will go back to our, our COVID nineteen update. Um, Mr. Dennehy, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Uh, thank you again, Madam Chair. Uh, just a brief update, um, m- many probably have seen it, but I think, uh, Massachusetts recorded almost a record number of positive cases today. Um, well over four thousand cases, I think north of forty-five hundred cases, um, nearly fifty deaths yesterday. Um, it's not, it's, it's not, not in Milton, right? The mil- the virus is in our community. I've been crunching some numbers, uh, through the monthly reports we get, uh, and just ver- very quickly, if you could bear with me. So two weeks ago, uh, the fourteen-day period prior to that, Milton had forty-six cases. Uh, this past Thursday, uh, that number for the fourteen prior days jumped to a hundred and twenty. So, um, that's a hundred and fifty percent increase in our community. Um, the community, it, it, the virus is in our community. We need to continue to be vigilant, uh, vigilant, uh, wearing our masks, following the mandates that the state has, has put, uh, forth. Um, you know, the, the states are a sixty-eight per- percent increase over that same time period. Um, and, and there is more testing and, and, and I understand that with more testing, you'll get more positives. But I think the, the underlying factor is that the percent of positivity has also doubled in that period. So during that same timeframe, uh, Milton was, uh, one, one percent two weeks ago of the number tested were positive. Uh, we were over two percent, uh, this past Thursday. And with the congregations that probably took place, uh, with families getting together, uh, we could see an uptick in that when the numbers come out later this week. Um, but just want to reiterate to everyone, uh, the work that's being done by Caroline Kinsella and her staff, uh, and, and the Board of Health, and all of the, all of the, the town departments. We received several, uh, complaints this weekend about, uh, people not wearing masks. A lot of children not wearing masks, outdoor using our parks. Uh, Kevin Crissom and some members of his team, uh, the Milton Police Department, they're trying to re- re-engage these people and let them know how serious this problem is. So, um, I, I, I think I've said enough, I, but I could probably go on further, but the statistics are there. Um, you know, you can, you can make numbers, say whatever you want, but a hundred and fifty percent increase in our community is, that, that's a real number in, in a two-week period. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, I talked to Caroline Kinsella, our Health Director today, and yesterday we had twenty-one cases, which is a record for Milton and not, not one to feel good about. Um, and, uh, Mr. Dennehy mentioned, uh, this weekend, I, I, and maybe other members got email, uh, an email about, uh, um, young people using our parks and our courts, continuing to not wear masks and asking what, what could be done. So the, um, Board of Health and Parks and Select Board will be putting a letter together to go to, into the newspaper, uh, talking about the steps that will need to be taken if people don't adhere, um, not just to the ma- and, you know, mask wearing. We're, we're encouraging people to do all the things they need to do and it's not just parks. Um, because you, you can catch this anywhere, but, uh, but the, we'll be doing that. Um, Caroline Kinsella is doing a PSA with some Milton, uh, public school students, uh, on Monday. And, um, there's, uh, you know, I suggest that we think about doing our own PSA or having some sort of, um, campaign just to keep the message in front of people. And, um, I, I think that that would be something maybe we should, could talk about at the, at the moment under this agenda item, if people have thoughts or reactions to this. Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, I think several of the thoughts are very well taken from the experience in this area of East Milton on, uh, the Monday and Tuesday evenings before Thanksgiving in particular. Um, getting something into the, uh, newspapers, the Milton scene, et cetera, is well warranted, but I think we like to, uh, also consider something that will go directly into the homes, uh, because many people don't, um, uh, either receive or they select what they want to take a look at, whereas something of this importance might, um, resonate better if we had an effort that did get to home by home, uh, delivery and attention. Um, the point, uh, Mr. Dennehy made about youth is very, very telling. The congregations, uh, the intersections of Basset and Franklin Street were extremely telling. Uh, the same at Church Street and Church Place. Um, I would say eighty percent did not have a mask at all. Uh, that, um, proximity was immediate. And this is hard, uh, these young people who are coming into a, a socialization process, uh, in their lives. And anything that we can think of doing that would help them and those who are responsible for them to, um, look at the importance of protecting the community as well as themselves would be very, very well taken. There are people in the neighborhood who, um, will not now go out into the neighborhood other than several hours, like ten-thirty to eleven-thirty at noon, um, themselves for a walk or to walk their dogs, et cetera, um, because of what they have seen and experienced and the course of the last, um, um, period of good weather in particular.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Wells?
I'm muting a slow tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with Arthur. Now, I'm in many of the areas that he is every day. And two things that are very important that, and Mr. Dennehy and I talked about this again today. You know, one of the things is that a vast majority of the cases are coming from young kids, you know, young. Michael and I talked today about just another group that just got quarantined because a young kid had it and exposed all the others. I think maybe we're beyond PSAs and we're beyond, you know, you weren't as a young policeman. I know I keep going back to this a lot lately, is you carry two tools with you, a carrot and a stick. Lead with a cap and never be afraid to show the stick. And, you know, maybe perhaps Michael should have a conversation with Kevin Crissom at all the parks. Maybe we should close the parks for a weekend and just say, look, no one's coming back. Because Arthur's correct, I've watched a dozen basketball games in the past two weeks in Andrews. No one with masks. And in some cases, parents sitting in their cars watching it. This virus is a risk to all of us. And I get Arthur's, I mean, it's tough. You're young. I have a teenage child. I get it. But it's deadly and we're so close here. And my fear is that we've already heard the governor and the mayor talk about reopening field hospitals. We've seen how, we saw what happened back in April. We know. But I think this is a time where, Madam Chair, I think we'll be on any, I mean, anyone who knows, all of our businesses, we're not getting any violations in our businesses, our stores that are all open. I was at Tedeschi's tonight and he stepped, someone opened the door, they told him right away, put your mask on before you even step in. Our restaurants, the same things. If our establishments in town toeing the line, then maybe we need to take, it's time to show the stick a little bit. Maybe we close the parks for weekends, say, look, we'll never reopen it. Whether it snows or anything, like, this is serious. This is, we all know people who've got it, and probably almost know someone who's died from it. And whether you're 17 and get it, you really pose a risk to anyone who's in your family who has any type of high-risk medical issue, or anyone who's a senior. And that's where I think, I mean, we've been living in this now for nine and a half, almost 10 months. We'll be on PSAs, I think, absent, you know, having, and I'm not, I'm not a proponent of having police officers going around just nod. But I do think that we could take, we do own a lot of town amenities here. And maybe we take some strict, I mean, Friday night, Thanksgiving, there had to have been 30 kids going in there on bikes with no, not one single mask amongst anyone. It's just, and I get it's hard for parents too, they can't. But I think we really need to take a stronger look at these next two months, especially these five weeks going through Christmas, will be really, really difficult. I, for one, and I'm sure you would all agree with me, I don't want to go back to phase one. I just don't. This town was desolate. I don't know if we shut these businesses down again, if they'll make it this time. We've done so much work to get to where we are. And it's time to just show the stick a little bit. I think we have to take something a little bit more drastic to make people pay attention.
So we, I did discuss that with Ted Carroll, who's the Chair of Parks and Rec, the idea of asking if they were considering closing parks. And that's Laura Richards, who's the Chair of the Board of Health, had suggested that we do a letter and let people know that that's really the next step. I'm waiting for their comments. And then we would pool our comments and put them in the paper. But they do have a meeting Monday, so it may be that they are going to close parks Monday. And unfortunately, we have town meeting. But that may be something that, that if we agree as a board, that we would like to encourage them to really seriously think of that, think about that, that that's something that we could think about. Ms. Conlon?
Madam Chair, so if there's a letter, will we be looking at a draft of this, I guess, at our meeting on Monday night for the newspaper?
Well, yeah, that's one thing that I wanted to talk about. Because if we're definitely going to be involved, my question was, do people want to see a draft? Because if we want it to go in the paper next week, the deadline would be noon on Tuesday. So we could look at a draft, but it will have comments from the Board of Health and the Parks Commission as well. So if, if the board would like to do that, then we can. Otherwise, we don't have to participate. That letter will still go forward.
So this is a letter that the Parks and the Board of Health are putting together and just inviting us to participate in if we'd like.
Right. Well, it was Laura's idea, but it was prompted by my saying, we really need to do something. What action are we going to take on this?
So just on that, just to follow up. So I think that the idea of the closing the parks for a couple of days makes sense. I suggested that as well. When I got that email over the weekend, that kids are showing up to the new street hockey rink over Kelly Field without masks. And of course, that's really the parents ultimately who are responsible for making sure that the kids are following the protocols. But I think the Park Department and the Park Commissioner should consider that. And we should also do as much as we can, whether it's town employees or police officers, you know, down there with a big box of masks. And if there are kids there and they don't have them on, then I think we should distribute some. And if we still find it's a problem, I think they should take some action to close the park for a couple of days. But again, that's, you know, it's a separately elected board that's going to make the call on the parks. I think there is still some value in the PSAs. I hear what Richard's saying, that, you know, there is fatigue out there about the pandemic. But I think it was effective in the spring when Mr. Zulus, as the Chair of the Board, was leading that. And the Town Administrator, the Health Director, Chuck Caputo, Lieutenant Caputo, were giving updates periodically. And, you know, a lot of people watch Channel 8, so it's a good way to get the word out. The Chair and I were talking today about a campaign that the MMA is doing called Mask Up, where people are putting out photos. And I don't know whether they're distributing them by email, or whether it's just internal, whether it's going out to cities and towns that are member communities. But I think if something locally based like that might help. For instance, the Chair, putting up a photo of the Chair with a mask and maybe a message that there would be a tagline or that would go with that. And then maybe every week or every few days, having somebody else doing it. And not necessarily from town government. It could be somebody from the business community, or the, one of the sports leagues, or the clergy, or any, any variety of members of the community, maybe doing some kind of a campaign where we push it out on social media, we put it up on Channel 8. So I think there's some value still in doing that. But I agree that enforcement is something that we need to be looking at.
Yeah. So go ahead. I'll follow my, I just want to add something to my, go ahead, Mike. I'll go last.
Mr. Zulus?
He's muted.
Oh, you're muted.
So I don't know if there's enough appreciation right now among people that the COVID-19 infections in Milton right now are exploding. Mike pointed out, the two-week rate went from 40 to 120 last week. It's probably going to be about to 151 this week when it comes out tomorrow. So the cases are exploding. And it appears to be at a higher rate than in the spring. And so anything we can do to create that sense of urgency, we should certainly have that the same urgency we have in the spring, because it's exploding at apparently the same rate or a higher rate than it was in the spring. So if it's PSAs, if it's notices in the home, if it's, if it's meeting with the Park Commissioners and the Board of Health to put out a joint statement or a joint letter to try to get people to take, to appreciate that this thing is exploding, as Richard pointed out, you know, the end is in sight, right? In a few months, we're going to be in a much better position. But it feels like, you know, if we don't get a handle on this and try to create that sense of urgency, we're going to blow it at the end. And so, so anything we can do, I think all the ideas are good ones. And anything we can do to create that sense of urgency and commitment from the people to really take this thing on for the last two months, I think is really important and critical for us, and critical for us as a board to help lead.
Mr. Wells?
I just want to follow up to Katie and Michael. I'm okay with the PSA if we put if we put some strong, like, look, here's what's going to happen, you know, A, B, C, and D, Y. But if this continues, we're going to shut down, you know, the parks, the basketball courts, the things that people relish that got them through the summer, especially young adults, are going to be closed. The hockey rink, all that, we're going to have to do it. And then, I mean, they need to pay attention. As Michael says, we're so close, I'm right, we're so close. But how many do we have, how many bodies do we need to leave along the side of the road to get there? I mean, I wait every afternoon. I've inherited this from Pauline because she tracks every day so much because of her work at Gamage. And like, Michael, you watch those numbers are just blowing through the roof, through the roof.
I did invite Parks and Board of Health to join in a PSA. I thought that would be effective.
Madam Chair, do you think it might be where we are, meeting Monday night, and we're all going to be attending town meeting? Do you think we could, are we going to meet before 10:00? Could we carve just five minutes or 10 minutes before, in our meeting to jointly meet with both of them and have this very frank discussion? Like, I'd let them know, if I were you, that the two chairs of both, like, look, here's what we're, at least let them know what you're hearing from us.
Yeah.
And then maybe eyeing out, I don't want to, I don't want to wait another week. Michael has said it'll be 300% next week.
Right.
Every five days is another 1,000 people.
Yeah. So we're scheduled to meet at 6:30. And I, Mike, do you know, do you know what time Parks is meeting on Monday? Oh, you're muted.
I do not, but I could find out. It might be in the middle of the day. They tend to meet around noon time.
They, oh, they do?
Yeah.
But are they going to town meeting? I mean, three of them, all three are town meeting members. So it might be.
Maybe, maybe, maybe they and the Board of Health would, would join us at six, like, right at 6:30. We could do that first. Could you?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
Town meeting is seven or 7:30?
Seven.
7:30.
Thirty.
Thirty.
That'll give us an hour. All right. So an hour should be enough time.
Right. We do have other agenda items, but this is one of the most important. So we could, we could do that. Yeah. If you, if maybe you could check and see if they, if Board of Health and, and Parks would join us, that would be very helpful. And then maybe we can hammer these things out. I also like all the ideas. I think that, you know, we do them all. And because they'll hit different, different segments of our residents. And I think we're all really worried about them. So, Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, there's only one little comment that I'd like to make. And that is that we asked the Board of Health what they would recommend for articulation about the vaccine program. Because there is, and numbers of people have voiced this, a sense of false security, like, it's going to happen tomorrow. So they guide down, when in reality, they don't understand the full measure of deployment that's going to be involved in the timetables and so on down the line, and what could happen between now and when somebody gets their shot or shots, and then how much time thereafter it takes before they have the desired immunity. So anything that would be helpful along those lines, I think would add to the asset value of what we're discussing.
Okay. Yeah, I'll let Caroline know that. She and I were talking about talking vaccines today because she was likening it to the 20 rounds they did for H1N1. And, but I mean, like, we probably won't see a vaccine till late spring, early summer. We're not, medical personnel, we're not first responders, we're not in congregant care facilities. And maybe, Arthur, you're right, people don't realize how long it will take. And that there's no immunity until they get that second round, if it's Pfizer or Moderna. So, okay, well then we can look forward to that. And then hopefully, we'd have a letter put together by then as well. So that would be another piece. And maybe we could, could do some thinking about what kind of, what kind of information we send into homes as well. Yes, Mr. Dennehy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along those lines, and to remember Doyle's point, I've reached out to the Town Treasurer to find out when his next mailing goes out. Something that we could probably add, wouldn't take too much time to put a flyer together and stuff that in with his, with the next bill going out to the residents.
Great. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Doyle.
Yes, thank you. Is there anything else before we move on?
Wear your mask.
That's right. You gotta, you gotta wear your mask, wash your hands, stay home if you don't feel well. And Katie and I were talking about earlier.
I saw a hunter on the Blue Hills yesterday. He had his mask on.
Well.
So what does that tell you?
Yeah. Everybody can take it seriously if they choose to. So stay positive, test negative, which means you have to wear your mask, right? We care about other people in this town. So now on item number six, it's an update on the Squanton and Adams Roadway Project. I think Mr. Dennis, Dennehy, Mr. Berkeley is here, and you have a guest to introduce.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll turn it over to DPW Director Berkeley. And welcome, Greg Lucas from Beta. Good evening, Greg. Good evening. Chase, Chase, you want to fill our viewing audience and the board in on what Beta's here to talk about this evening?
Sure. Thank you, everybody. So just as a reminder, the 2018 Annual Town Meeting appropriated funding through the Capitol article to signalize the intersection of Squanton and Adams Street. So we've been working on that kind of behind the scenes to the general public. Since then, we selected the firm Beta Engineering to do the design of the project. And then the intention has always been to submit it to get federal funding for the construction of it through the Mast dot project development process. So very similar to the East Milton Square deck, similar to Granite Abbot's Squanton. So it's a lengthy process, and it is much more involved than if the town were to undertake it on our own. But we don't have to pay for the construction if we are successful. So it is certainly worth the effort. So Greg Lucas is with us. He's the project manager for Beta, and he's just going to give an update. We recently submitted to Mast dot the 25% design, which is a big milestone for the project. And Greg can catch us up on where that sits now.
Welcome, Mr. Lucas. Oh, you're muted.
Thank you, Chase. Thank you, Madam Chair, other board members. I'm going to share my screen and just do a brief presentation to introduce you to the project. Hopefully everyone can see that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And so, as Chase introduced the project, you know, the point of, the point of this is for the town to advance this project through the Mast dot tip process, where the town is responsible for design funding, but the state Mast dot manages the project and administers construction and pays for the construction of the project. And so, the project is the intersection of Adams Street at Squanton Street, signalization of that intersection, along with Rose Street, opposite Squanton Street, and then a portion of the Adams Street corridor in vicinity of Squanton Street. And so, a brief history of the project and Beta's involvement with the town on the project. We started entering a contract in May of 2019. We started out doing field survey, traffic data collection, traffic counts, and some field reconnaissance. And then we started looking at conceptual alternatives for what could be done at this intersection. We submitted those to Mast dot in early 2020. Those conceptual alternatives were revised and informed based on a Mast dot directive, which I'll talk about, go into a little more detail on in the next slide, because it's, it's the meat of how the project concept was defined and how we, you know, how we got to what ended up being the 25% design. Those revised alternatives were submitted in May. We got some feedback from Mast dot on those, and that informed, as I say, informed the 25% design, which was submitted on November 20th, right before the Thanksgiving holiday. And so, that engineering directive gets into Mast dot's focus on healthy transportation. And so Mast dot has a healthy transportation policy, which they've been, which they enacted in 2013, and has been a significant part of project design and development since then. And what it is, is it's a focus on healthy transportation modes. And what it is, is it's a focus on healthy transportation modes, walking, bicycling, and, uh, focused on safety for all users. Uh, transit is another piece that it focuses on because that's something that requires that, um, alternate transportation connection, typically a pedestrian, uh, sometimes a bicyclist. And so, the directive that was released earlier this year expanded that and gave some controlling criteria for pedestrian facilities, bicycle facilities, and transit provisions. And so that really informed the design of the project, and the next three slides that, um, I realized there's, there's a lot of detail here, and I'll try to, I'll try to walk you through the highlights, these, um, there's a plan view, there's three slides that show the different segments of the project. So, the segment that we're looking at here is west of Squanton Street, and you can see, um, Reservation Road intersection, uh, Governor Belcher Lane is just west of the, of the end of what would be the project limit. And so what happens here, if you look at the eastbound direction, eastbound lane, you can see that, um, the lane opens up, and then there's a bicycle lane, and that's what we call a buffered bicycle lane. There's a five-foot bike lane and a two-foot buffered strip, which would be a painted buffer marked in the road, not, not a physical curve, not delineators, just a painted buffer for the bicyclist. And this provides a dedicated space for the bicyclist, um, to travel along this portion of Adams Street, in addition to still accommodating the travel lanes. Uh, heading eastbound, you see that single travel lane, and then opens up into a dual left turn lane to Squanton Street, maintaining the through lane and the buffered, um, bicycle lane. Going westbound, we're coming away from Squanton Street here, we carry a bike lane through the project, single travel lane, buffered bike lane, um, to the project limit, where then it transitions to a single travel lane and bicycles. Bicyclists would use that travel lane right along the edge of the roadway like they do, like they would do today if they wanted to use the facility. Um, this next slide is, this is the main, the, the meat of the project, the intersection of Squanton and Adams. Here, on the left side, you see that dual left turn lane, um, that will accommodate, um, some stacking. We've squeezed in as much as we can here, um, as far as the length of that left turn lane, and, um, allow those vehicles to have a protected face to, to make a left turn on the Squanton Street, maintaining the single through lane. Um, you see passing through the intersection, we maintain the single through lane, uh, that buffered bicycle lane. Uh, we maintain the general idea of the islands that are there today with some slight reconfiguration. Uh, approaching Squanton Street from the east, from East Milton Square, we have a single travel lane that widens a buffered bicycle lane, and then a through lane, uh, continues along Adams Street, a right turn lane to Squanton Street. Squanton has the two lanes departing the intersection, which accommodates that dual left turn lane, and the two lanes approaching the intersection accommodating left or right turning vehicles. Rose Street would also be under signalized control. And the little inset up in the corner is just because of the way the plant's cut, that's, that's the end of, um, the Squanton Street segment uh, at Augusta Road. And then the next slide is, is the end, you know, the end piece, and it transitions back to the single lane, um, in each direction that opens up to two lanes approaching Brook Road. We're, we're making some signal coordination improvements with Brook Road, but we're not doing any physical modifications there. And so, overall, this is summary of what's included in the project. Fully actuated traffic signal at the intersection of Adams Street, Squanton Street. For those of you that don't speak traffic engineer, fully actuated means that there's detection, um, uh, video detection by camera that will detect vehicles and only provide timing when they're there. Um, and then there's timing settings that will, you know, allow for the amount of time that the vehicles need, which is heavier during the peak periods. Uh, the dual protected left turn lane from Adams Street eastbound towards Squanton Street, and exclusive right turn lane from Adams Street westbound to Squanton Street. Split phasing for Squanton Street and Rose Street. What that means is they won't be green at the same time. Rose Street will have a separate green phase so that they can get out into the intersection and go where they need to do. They don't need to compete with Squanton Street, which is obviously a much higher volume approach. Uh, as I mentioned, the five-foot buffered bike lane throughout, throughout the project limits. Reconstruct the pavement by milling overlay, which, where you remove the top layer pavement and then reconstruct it. Some areas of full-depth construction to make grading work, that's where it's a more, um, invasive, more full, full-depth construction. It goes deeper and reconstructs more of the pavement structure. Uh, all sidewalks will be reconstructed with, uh, new ADA compliant ramps. Drainage improvements, including deep-sump catch basins, which gives us a little more opportunity for stormwater management. Um, new pavement markings, signage, and then, as I mentioned, there would be traffic signal coordination between the new signal at Adams and Squanton and the existing signal at Adams and Brook. Uh, no physical changes proposed at Adams and Brook. And there are some right-of-way impacts, there are, there are some widening, um, especially west of Squanton Street on the north side of Adams Street. Permanent easements, this is where, um, land would be acquired to accommodate the project. There's seven total, affecting seven properties. Um, there's one permanent utility easement where you need to take property for the sake of the utility pole relocation in an aerial right where the overhead wire goes, that the overhead wire doesn't encroach on private property. And then temporary construction easements would be required for most abutting properties, um, just to allow construction. That's where, you know, the property line may be at the back of sidewalk, but while they're constructing the sidewalk, they need to briefly encroach on the property. So we need those easements for that purpose. The total cost at 25%, the construction cost is 1.5 million. Um, there's additional costs related to utility relocation, and the right-of-way acquisition cost would also be a town cost. Um, utility relocation, there is a rather significant, um, gas vault at the northwest, uh, northeast corner of Adams to Squanton. The project's been designed to avoid impacts to that. There is a control cabinet there that would need to be relocated, um, that would be paid for by Mast dot, but would be part of the construction project with work done by the gas company. Um, and then utility relocation, where poles need to be relocated, again, the utility companies would do that work with some reimbursement from, uh, Mast dot as part of the, as part of the project. Next steps on the project, we submitted 25% on November 20th. Uh, typically, it's about a three-month review, so that puts us to the end of February. With that, the next step after this, Design Public Hearing, which is their formal, um, public presentation of the project, where we would go and, and, um, put together a presentation and invite the public. Um, that's probably mid-twenty, mid-2021. And right now, I, I think, you know, I just heard you guys all talk about COVID and what's going on, and I, I appreciate that you're very vigilant about what's happening with the COVID pandemic, um. I think in mid-2021, we're still going to be virtual, but Mast dot has a process by which they can do those public hearings virtually and still get the information to the public and, and accept their, uh, feedback. With that timeline, 75% submittal could be in fall of 2021. But the 75% and, and on, and through final design is really funding dependent. The project is currently not on the state tip, um, which is the, the universe of projects that are funded, um, have funding in a five-year cycle. We, uh, Beta and DPW were very active the last cycle about getting this project onto the tip, which did not happen. We'll do that again this coming year, and I think showing progress, showing the town's commitment to the project with the 25% submittal already being in helps that, and I, I'm confident that the project will get on the tip, um, in the next cycle. Once that happens, then, um, that kind of dictates the timeline. I can't say right now when this would actually be constructed, but it's possible that this could be done, you know, this could be ready for shovels in the ground in two years. It's all gonna come down to the funding now. And that's, uh, the, the brief overview that I wanted to give to you, um. And so with this, I'll open it up in case, um, the board has questions and wants to ask about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Let's see, hard to see the, um, see all of you. Um, Mr. Lucas, if you wouldn't mind unsharing
Sure.
your screen, then I could see everyone, but I do think, Mr. Wells, I saw your hand go up first.
I do, but I'll go last. I can't, because I can't see anybody else, so, um, where I do have the
I'm trying to get.
Being lucky enough to understand this line a little bit, um, and understand the issue here, um. This is a section gonna be a lot different political, um, and political, uh, races in the town for standouts in the years to come. It's kind of, if anyone was ever stood there, and I think all of us have at one point, it's, it's, it's truly a who gets there first, who gets there, gets through first, kind of, particularly in PM commute, so, um, this is long overdue. You, um, Greg, you already answered my one question, my big concern, um, dating back to when this, I think my first proposal that I heard of this goes back to when Kevin Murn was chief. Um, the first thought of having it is that, and I know Senai is gonna be very happy to hear this, is that the two signals will talk to each other. I think that's vital. I, I, Chase, you could correct, this, these won't talk to East Milton, but correct, and we'll go that far. It will, it'll sort, it will connect into all the work that Howard Stein Hudson has done just to, because the more signals we can get to talk to each other, as Mike Zulis knows from, um, his quick education on the, uh, on his committee, um, the more that we can get to talk to each other, the better off we are, particularly in, in, um, both the AM and the PM commute. They talk about, you hear, you've heard me say the high tide that comes in the morning, and the high tide that comes back in the afternoon, north and south, so. Um, I'm very happy about that. I think that's long overdue, and, um, I'm glad to hear that. And you are, and Greg, I, I think, Chase, I asked you this, you are familiar with the, the, um, the discussions currently for a proposed fire station right there at Libby and Adams, correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
It's only, it would only be proposed to be a single-engine house, but, um, it's 150% improvement to get out of that, would be to get out of that location than it is from where it's currently housed, right in the heart of the square right now.
Yeah, and this, um, you know, this, this signal will have emergency preemption, um, and with the pro- with the proximity of the new station, um, that could be tied into the signal so that when they come out, they can push a button, and that signal will be green, so they can get, go in that direction as needed.
I think Chief Matt will be very happy to hear that, as will Tim Clark and Brian Walsh. And just my last question, if it talks to all of them, is it, that will talk to the new lights at Squanton and Granite, or is it separate from that, the new lights that went in there last year?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Chase, do you know, Chase, do you know if those tie into the square?
They don't right now.
They don't tie into the square, no, they don't know.
Then, then no.
Okay.
But they can, you know, the capability and what, what I know of what Howard Stein Hudson has designed in East Milton Square is that it's a very adaptable system, and, and other adjacent signals can be brought into that system, and then more and more of them are talking to one another, and you know, more and more.
Because it only makes sense to Mr. Zulis's, sorry, to Mr. Zulis's committee. As you know, Michael, there's been discussion of, you know, should a light, set of lights, we know that there's gonna be fully functional satellites are gonna happen at Granite and Squanton, I mean, Granite and Bassett. Should, should there possibly be a set of lights at Granite Wood, but the fact, if you could connect so that Squanton, and you could tell me I'm wrong, either Greg or Chase, if you connect Squanton and Granite to talk to all of those, that truly helps you dramatically, particularly in the AM pressure commute northbound into the city.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, you know, the, the sys, these, these modern systems, you know, it used to be that we designed, uh, traffic signal timing to traffic counts that we did on one day and time. And so, you know, that can reflect a typical peak commute, but it's, you know, multiple timing plans for different peaks in the day, but that's it. The newer systems, they detect what the traffic's coming in, they adapt to, to them, they revise timing for them. It's constantly adjusting based on the real-time flow, so it's, it's a great improvement in handling traffic and handling bursts of traffic, obviously, when the highway, the highways often backed up, but you know, there's times where even more people are getting off the highway into the streets of Milton, and so it can handle that in a, in a much improved and much more efficient fashion.
Vice Chair Conlon had a suggestion back when I was police chief that we closed the, uh, northbound at exit nine in the morning. And at that, in those days, I used to think, oh my God, the more I look at it nowadays, the more I like the idea, but, um, well, thank you very much, and, you know, whatever we can do, I, I think this is a long time coming, and it's, as I've said before, we're throwing away our black and white tube television known as the lighting infrastructure in East Milton, and we're buying high-def finally in the age 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chase, too.
Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to add my compliments, um, on this entire project to all who are involved, to the many people who helped to make this, um, possible. I grew up on Rose Street, I had, um, close friends in the three houses opposite the lower end of Rose Street, lived at that intersection, probably more than my parents ever wanted me to. And, um, this is the type of thing that's been needed there in one form or another for decades, so, thank you, congratulations. And I just want to, uh, put a, um, a pin in something that, uh, Richard said about the intersection of Wood Street and Greenwich Avenue. Um, we have to not let that go unattended, it's, uh, something that we should put on the radar screen. It's not part of this project, but, uh, nonetheless, it's been cited by a number of people, and if we could, um, do something there in our planning process for the future, it'd be very, very valuable.
Thank you. Mr. Dennehy?
Just one more note, and I want to thank Mr. Lucas for coming in tonight, but he did mention that the fact that the town has, has shown uh, an investment in this project, um, and, and the ability to be shovel-ready for this project should help when, when we start to get in line for funding. Um, I think a lot of the credit goes to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, uh, particularly April Anderson, who suggested that we, we put a little over a million dollars away to show the town's commitment to this problem intersection. Um, and, um, uh, pleased with Mr. Lucas's, uh, timing forecast for it, and hopefully we can get something turned around pretty quickly, but it, it's the fact that Capital Improvement Committee, this board, uh, Warren Committee and Town Meeting supported that article in the funding for this intersection, that, that helps make, uh, it, it jump the line, if you will, because the town is, is, has funded it, uh, is ready to fund, uh, a portion of it, um, and, and it increases its, its project availability, shovel, shovel in the ground. So, thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members have a comment or a question? Okay, well, tha- thank you, yes, I, I echo that, all, all the thanks, Mr. Lucas, for joining us, and thank you, Mr. Berkeley, um, and, and Mr. Dennehy, I, I, and all the people who did work on this, and we're very much looking forward to, uh, to all the improvements and the safety, so.
I'll go buy a shovel if you want help.
Every little bit helps.
Actually, I have a post digger in my garage, I could.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you again.
Good, good night.
Let's see, so, uh, item, item number eight is, uh, just general departmental budgets. I, I, I think actually I'll just ask, um, Ms. Conlon, who's the chair, uh, I, I don't think we actually have items that we're going to be talking about this evening. Um, we've moved this to Monday, um, possibly. Oh, you're, you're muted now.
The Finance Committee is meeting Friday, so I don't think there's anything for tonight, but
Right.
I, but I don't, I don't know whether he had DPW budget here.
Yes.
Like it was tied into that, but
Right, it, that, that, that's next. I just wanted to double-check, I didn't want to leapfrog over that in case, uh, yes, Mr. Dennehy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and, and, um, Madam Vice Chair, yeah, so we're gonna taking, be taking a lot of this up on, on Friday, just a brief update, so Barbara Costa, uh, who's gonna be the consultant helping, uh, in the transition, um, as we look for a new Director of Finance, uh, Town Accountant, um, has worked with Town Accountant Amy Dexter for the last two days, so we've been bringing her up to speed on, on the directive for the FY22 budget. Um, she's very, very capable, uh, she has a lot of municipal finance, uh, in her brain. Um, Amy's very comfortable with the person, uh, sitting next to her for the next couple of days, so, uh, bringing her up to speed on the FY22 budget and some of the stuff that, that's coming down the pike. We have received some more budgets from the, the, the town departments and, and some of the departments, uh, that report to boards and committees, so. Um, we're starting to get there. Uh, my question to this, uh, board tonight, in, in years gone by, Amy and Lisa Cool in her office have spent a lot of time putting hard books together. Um, just throwing it out there, with thinking possibly of putting all this stuff in a OneDrive that could be shared, a little easier and, and less cumbersome, a lot of work in, in putting those hard copies together. And I, I know they're nice to have, um, we could certainly print them if, if you want to, but just wondering what the thoughts of this board would, would be to, to share all of these, these budgets in, in a OneDrive, potentially, um, in, in years gone by, some of the board members. In years gone by, some of the board members haven't picked up the books in it, and it it's a lot of time and effort that goes into into binding them and and separating the budget, but just just a thought before we lose our town accountant.
Right. Does anyone have a preference or a question?
No, my preference is usually for the printed binder copies, because I think the Finance Committee will be using them as we go through the winter months, but everyone might have an individual preference on this.
Right. I I I think as long as if somebody needs a printed copy in a in a binder, if that's available upon request, that would be great. I I think maybe, Mr. Zulus, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but it would be nice if the two Finance Committee members were able to get them.
Yeah, I was going to say I didn't need a binder, but I forgot I was on the Finance Committee, so maybe I need one.
That's fine. Yeah, we'll we'll certainly we'll certainly make a couple up. That's that's not a problem, but and it's also going to be available in the OneDrive, so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's fine for me. Okay. Thank you, and thank you for the update. Okay, so now we we have a departmental update from Public Works and I think Mr. Berkeley is here along with lots of wonderful new staff members. So we're going to have an introduction before we we move on to talking about the DPW budget. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so a lot of personnel changes in the particularly in the engineering part of Public Works over the last couple of months. So, you know, long term Town Engineer John Thompson left and right behind him, our Civil Engineer Chris Trudell, and we our Environmental Coordinator Anna Meyer all resigned over the last couple of months. So we're in a great place today because we have replaced them all with very talented and energetic people who I'm happy to introduce. So our new Civil Engineer, who started October 5th, is Tim Anasio. Our new Environmental Coordinator, Erica DeDonato, and our new Water Superintendent, Water Source Superintendent Greg McEntee, who is going to become the town's primary water operator for our drinking water system. So I'll be happy to give them all, you know, a brief moment to introduce themselves. But essentially, you know, we we certainly lost a lot of institutional knowledge, losing long term employees and that many of them such a short timeframe. But we have great replacements here for them and welcome the new fresh pair of eyes on everything as well, and to take an opportunity to learn from their other experiences. So I don't know if you had a particular order, but I could start with Tim Anasio if you'd like and let him go.
Great.
Hey, everybody. How are you? Thanks for having me.
Oh, we're happy.
Love the backdrop. Best backdrop of anyone that's ever been before us on Zoom.
I had the exact same thought, Richard. I like the backdrop.
I do.
This is better than watching CNN.
It was funny. Yesterday was the first time I ever used Zoom, believe it or not. So this is the first time I've actually been on video. Yesterday I did the sort of black screen and then I got my whole draft room set up back here.
We see. We thought Chase was pulling a fast one on us, and this was actually some type of TikTok show we were watching.
Yeah, so it's good to be here. No, it's okay. Been on board about two months now. It's been great. Chase, Greg, Erica has been a huge help. There's been a lot of, as Chase was mentioning, there's been a lot of changes with the personnel. So I picked up a lot of projects which were on the tail end, but I sort of when I came on board, I picked them up midstream. So a lot of it happened, you know, kind of just sort of I started at M, I'd had to go back to A to get to Z. So we're wrapping everything up this week. So it's good. It's been a great learning experience, a great learning of town, happy to be here. I like the the fact that the town has has older the infrastructure because that gives like more possibility to mitigate that stuff, and that's the stuff I'm interested in. I had come from Bellingham in a similar role, but the town is a lot different. There's a lot of new subdivisions, sort of like set it and forget it type things and you know, it's 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 we don't have to touch it for another 30, 40 years. This is great because, you know, we're 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 in a we have limited space within the right of way, and we have to we have to get creative on a lot of these projects and that's what I like about it. So and utility work is is fun. So it's been awesome.
You can say it, Tim. Things break in Milton all the time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Greg knows that. Greg knows that very well.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do, Mike.
Okay, I'm I'm having a MacGyver moment, but all right. Well, thank you. It sounds like we're we're well matched and appreciate you. You're you're coming to Milton. Does anyone on the board have anything to to say or a question or?
Welcome aboard.
Yes, welcome. Thank you. We're always here.
Thank you so much. Great to be here. Thank you.
Do you plow snow, too? Chase can always use help.
Yeah, I've done it before. Yeah, I haven't plowed, but I'm supervised, you know, so.
Every five years, we've got 100 litres of snow here in the winter.
Yeah, yeah.
We do. We're overdue.
Great. So who would like to go next?
Why don't we do Greg? Very nice to meet you all. I'm the new Water Sauer and Superintendent, like Chase has stated. A little background information on myself, been working in municipalities for about 18 years. Extensive background in both treatment and distribution. I've dealt with surface water. I've dealt with groundwater. Let's see, a couple of projects we're working on right now. One is to create and implement a backflow testing program. Another one is to start doing in-house. I'm sorry, create and implement a flushing program. And then another project is to create, start a in-house backflow testing program that we contract out right now. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you guys. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to to work here in Milton. So far, it's been a positive and rewarding experience. Everyone I've met and dealt with has been very helpful and supportive, for which I'm extremely grateful. I'd like to thank the the Select Board. I'd like to thank Mike Dennehy, Chase Berkeley, Tom McCarthy, and I just look forward to serving your community.
Well, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, if I might, so Greg probably wasn't two weeks on the job, and we had a resident on Westbourne Road who was suffering from a lot of COVID fatigue and had zero water pressure at his house. And Greg came out and and sorted the issue. So Mr. McKinney on Westbourne Road is very, very fond of Mr. McEntee and and the work he's done so far. But he personally and the town of Milton.
They were fantastic, Mr. Dennehy. They were. I met him. I met his family. It's always great to get this positive feedback. I I love it. And so far, like I've said, it's been been one of the best experiences I've had is in my municipal career working here. It's it's just been great and it's it's greatly appreciated.
Oh, well, that's great.
He has COVID fatigue.
And it's good to hear about the 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 projects that you're working on, too. I'm sure that the board, like me, is always interested in those those little details because we don't get them as often, and and they're just they're fascinating, and we really appreciate all the work our staff does, and we don't get enough of an eye into it.
But Greg, Greg, what communities have you worked in previously?
Previously, just before this, I worked in Bridgewater. I was the senior operator and secondary operator there. Then I worked at a desalinization plant. I wanted to get familiar with the surface water where we did reverse osmosis and ultrafiltration. It was a real learning curve there. That was a spectacular place to really experience how surface water is taken from its raw form out of the Taunton River. And we actually have to it's it actually becomes the water becomes, you have to add minerals to it because it becomes, what's the word I'm looking for, Chase?
Distilled, probably.
Distilled water. Yeah, it actually comes distilled water through that such a process, like I said, through reverse osmosis and ultrafiltration. It's it's a real incredible thing to see. I recommend it if anybody ever can get down to a desalinization plant and see the complete operation. It's it's quite mind blowing.
Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Oh, I I can tell you a couple of other communities. So before that, it was Bridgewater, Dayton for the desalinization plant. Then I worked in Avon for 15 years as the as a senior operator and secondary operator there, too.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Greg, was was Paul Hurley the DPW director when you were there in Bridgewater?
Paul Hurley? No, no, it was let's see, who was the the director?
He's our former assistant director.
Yeah, no, it wasn't Paul Hurley, and the name escapes me right now, but it wasn't Paul Hurley. That doesn't ring a bell.
Good luck to you. You're following a woman who had, as Chase knows, who had a ton of institutional knowledge in our water. And for anyone who lives in this town, if they ever were at any water main break and looked down and saw what the infrastructure of the MWR is that travels through this streets of this town that understand why it's so important for the for your department to do replacement projects every single year.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. People people really don't realize what's under their feet.
I know they don't. I've seen them. I know they don't. Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
That was Mr. DeDonato.
Yes, it's very nice to meet everybody. So I'm the new Environmental Coordinator. I've been in this position for a week now, so still getting used to the logistics of everything, but I'm very excited to be a part of the town. But a little bit of background about me, I started my municipal experience working for the town of Andover in both their Facilities Department and Department of Public Works. And I got to dabble in a lot of stuff while I was there, from building efficiency and energy management solid waste best practices and storm water pollution prevention. So I I learned a lot from that. And my most recent position was working with Waste Zero on working with municipalities on their waste reduction programs and helping them with their residential waste and trying to save money. And specifically, I worked with Pay as You Throw programs. And as you know, Milton is a longtime participant of Pay as You Throw, which I was very excited to see coming into this position. But I'm really happy now to be back in local government work. And I'm just really excited to take on, you know, the great foundation that my predecessors have left for me and just expanding upon that. So very excited to to dive dive deeper into everything.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us. Does any anyone have any questions or comments?
Just welcome aboard. Nice to have Erica.
Yes, it's wonderful to 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 have you and to have this position. It's I mean, we've had it for a while, but it's a newer position, and I think people in Milton really appreciate that that we put resources in in this in this space of and caring for our environment. So thank you for all joining us and and someday maybe we'll all meet in person. I'm sure you're all looking forward to that, too. Mr. Dennehy?
Madam Chair, if I if if I just might, in just in welcoming these three folks to a wonderful team. So the majority of my my time in in government has been in the Public Works world. They're joining a wonderful team. I can't name everybody down at 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 the yard or Alan Bishop up in the Engineering Department, but Tom McCarthy, Pat Balf, Kathy Bowen, Philip Driscoll, Darlene McGrath, everybody down there, everybody on the street. As as we know recently with the storms that that came through, and it doesn't have to necessarily be a winter storm, Tim. You know, flooding happens, trees come down, but obviously, I have a special place in my heart for Public Works people, but the the current group we have adding these three people to our organization and Jim Ferraro, who just started yesterday. I think the the residents of the town really this this Public Works Department can rival any in the state. So I just want to welcome them and and thank the current team that we have. It's a true asset to our town. So thank you all.
Thank you.
And I see it's week 25. Mr. Berkeley, we do have you you on for the the budget. I'm just wondering, members, if we might want to push this off and move on to storm water, but I'm happy to keep. Yes, okay. I think if you don't mind, maybe we could do we could do that. Okay, great. Thank you. So now we're on to storm water fees. And I think we have a presentation.
Yes, there should be some slides that Hillary can put up. But essentially, just just to get us to where we are today. So Town Meeting appropriates the Stormwater Enterprise Budget. And what we do typically in December is set the rate to be applied to all the properties in Milton. So the FY21 budget was about $50,000 more than the FY20, and those increases are basically just the debt service increase and the contractual salary increases for all of the salaries. So 7% of the salaries of all Public Works employees are paid out of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. So our general expenses were level funded from FY20. There is no increase in expenses except for yard waste, which is a contractual increase through our solid waste contracts, and yard waste is allocated all to the Stormwater Enterprise. So it's a very simple process to set the rates. It's a linear rate. All we do is take the budget amount and divide it by how much impervious area there is in town. And we apply that to the impervious size for each property. Single-family homes are put into categories and grouped tiers one through 4.3 to simplify the process. So we don't have to create an individual charge for every single property. And then commercial properties and multifamily properties are charged by their actual square footage. And so the rates are very, it's a very modest rate increase as compared to previous years, about 3.5% increase. On the chart in front of you, you'll see like the first tier is going to go up $2 for the year. And at the highest tier, it's going to go up 12. So you know, it is an increase, but it is a modest one, especially compared to previous years where there has been a larger increase is necessary, and that's mostly attributed to the storm water, excuse me, the yard waste collection fees going up with the new contracts. So there's a table, sorry, there's a table that shows the FY20 rates versus the FY21. And then all other properties that don't fall into these categories are charged based on their actual square footage, which our GIS analyst Alan Bishop maintained throughout the year. And then, you know, and in about December is the right time to to draw the line in the sand and apply those charges and and produce the bills for the year. And just as a reminder, those bills pay for not just storm water collection, but the maintenance of the town-owned collection system. So all the pipes and all the catch basins that are out in the street, you know, hundreds of miles of pipes and thousands of catch basins and also street sweeping and the disposal of all those cleanings and yard waste collection and disposal are the big big costs associated to that. We it also pays for all of our permit compliance. So we fall into the small MS4 general permit, which several hundred communities in Massachusetts also fall into. And so we use these funds to meet those permit requirements. There's a whole host of them, as you know, so that's what it pays for, and we certainly stretch those dollars as much as we can. In FY21, we did recommend once again to use whatever surplus we had to lessen the rate increase to the best of our ability. So we we try to minimize that increase to the best of our ability of what's left over, if anything, in the reserve funds. So I think that should cover it. If there's any questions about it, I'm happy to answer them, but that's really it.
Thank you. Do members have any questions? No? Okay. Great. I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the FY2021 storm water fees as outlined by Mr. Berkeley.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Great. Thank you very much. Next. We're just going to keep you here all evening, Mr. Berkeley. We have a a proposed charge to a, a, a proposed charge to, um, to sort of transition the, uh, Stormwater Advisory Committee, um, from its previous purpose, uh, which was to look at a fourth tier to, um, to a new, to a new charge. And would you like to walk us through the, uh, the, the credit, uh, system that, that this, uh, this committee would be responsible for?
Yes. So when the storm water regulations were adopted, there was a provision in there to create a credit system. Uh, and the, the idea behind the credit system is to allow credit on properties where uh, property owners have invested in storm water quality and control devices. So things like detention ponds and, um, methods of providing filtration, uh, to that water. So the, the idea is to keep the water on the property and to clean it before it's released. And if, and if a resident invests in that type of device and construction on their property, to offer a credit off of their, uh, storm water bill, um, as an incentive to, for residents to build those controls. We, uh, are required under our permit, um, to maximize the amount of storm water controls built on private property. So this, this is a good incentive to try to meet that permit requirement. And so, um, where the, uh, original charge of the Stormwater Advisory Committee is now, um, has now sunsetted and is obsolete, um, we, we could use, um, a new charge of evaluating the credit system that was put together, um, in the draft form and, and implemented fully and then offered to residents and property owners. So the new charge would be to, um, uh, make it a recommendation to this board to adopt a credit policy, um, that allows for credits up to 25% of your bill, um, for possessing storm water controls on your property. Um, we've provided a draft of that policy that's modeled off of the city of Newton's policy, which is very close to us. When the Stormwater Enterprise Fund was first created, the MAPC did a credit policy evaluation for us and provided us some examples of how different communities who have already done it do it. And we evaluated that and determined the way that Newt does it is the closest to how we would like to do it. And it kind of fits with our region and, um, our makeup. So, um, I think you have that policy in draft form to review, but the, the charge of the committee would be to, to, you know, review and recommend on that policy.
Um, and, and we do have that and, and I'll, I'll read the proposed charge in a moment, but, um, so it's my understanding that, uh, the, the committee would evaluate and present the recommendations and then, uh, whatever is accepted, then the, the DPW or, or you as the director would make the, the determinations about, uh, or would apply that policy. Is that correct?
Yes. So that's how the regulations are written. The board authorizes the credit policy and the DPW director is the implementation of it. Uh, and so a resident would file an application and we would approve it or not approve it for that credit.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, yes, Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Chase, thank you very much. I would, uh, like to underscore your comment, Chase, about uh, communication because, um, betterments that people make, whether they're rain gardens or uh, cul-de-sac implements, uh, uh, emplacements, et cetera, would be very, very advantageous to them as well as to the purpose of storm water management. Um, so I, I would just, uh, say that for a number of people, uh, communications about this opportunity will be well received. And also serves as an incentive for them to possibly do some things that they might otherwise not have done so. So, uh, again, congratulations and, uh, thanks for this proposal.
Thank you. Ms. Conlon?
I thought the proposed charge looked good. I, I guess my question more procedural, we had a committee in place. Um, are we thinking of keeping the same number of members and possibly the same members for the revised committee? And then what would the timeframe be to deliver recommendations? I don't recall, I didn't see it in the materials, but maybe we got a draft separately of the policy, but I didn't see it in the materials anyway.
We received those, I think, a, a week or two ago, so.
Okay, I'll look for it. Thank you.
But I'll, I'll make sure you get those. But, but, but that, that's a good question. Yes, Mr. Dennehy?
So, um, Mr., uh, I probably should have started by thanking the, the previous committee. So it was Tom Hurley, uh, former select board member, Tom Hurley, myself, Chase, uh, town meeting member Jay Funling and, and resident, uh, Jerry Burke. Um, if, if you remember, uh, Jay Funling came in with the, with the gent's dispersion model, which helped us solve the, the tier four dilemma with, with people uh, who just crossed over the threshold into tier four, having to pay the same prices as people with, with large swaths of, of impervious. So I want to thank everybody that was on the, the, the previous committee. Uh, Mr. Burke has, uh, voiced his, um, uh, affirmation to join this next committee, but we would be looking for, uh, well, i- if, if myself and Mr. Berkeley are on the committee, we'd probably be looking for, uh, uh, a member from this board and, and possibly, uh, another resident. I, I think the five, the five person board worked very well. Um, and, and anything bigger than that could get a little bit convoluted. Anything smaller than that, I, I don't think would work as well.
And is there, is there a timeline that, that was being looked at?
So we, we sat down, it's got to be about 18 months ago, Chase, right, to, 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 to talk about this? Um, Deborah Felton from Fuller Village and, and Mr. Gordon from Gun Hill were in, uh, strong advocates for credit system. Uh, at that time, uh, DPW Berkeley set forth on, on, uh, researching what other communities were doing and reached out to MAPC who presented to us. So, um, I, I would say sooner rather than later because, um, I, I think we have almost everything we need based on the research that Mr. Berkeley's done, um, and the work that MAPC put in for us. So, um, I, I think something deliverable in the next six months is, is, is fair if we can get this committee up and running soon.
Okay. So, yes, Mr. Zulus?
All right, I, I, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I appreciate that, um, Mike and Chase. Um, I, I, you know, personally, I, I'd really like to, uh, given that we have a draft, get something in place prior to town meeting in May. And I think that kind of fits within Mike's six month timeframe. So if we, if we can do whatever we can do to help move that along so we can get something in place by the town meeting in May. You know, Mike pointed out, we have a, a, a few, uh, taxpayers, um, such as Fuller Village and such as the temple that have, uh, systems in place that would probably be, um, uh, probably allow them to get credits. And so, so my interest is in getting something in place as, as soon as we can.
Um, right. Do you think we could, I mean, at our next regular meeting? May, would, would we be able to, uh, have a, a committee to appoint? I mean, I, I think if, if we could do that on the 16th, that would be great. Okay. Um, okay. Well, actually I see the charge as part of the motion. So, uh, if somebody would like to make the motion?
Madam Chair, please to move to approve, following the vice charge for the Stormwater Fee Advisory Committee, evaluate and present recommendations to the select board to consider establishing a system of credits as authorized by the town's storm water regulations that reduce the storm water management fee for properties that demonstrate that they have met performance standards established by the Director of Public Works for reducing the volume of storm water generated, the peak rate of storm water discharge and/or the quantity of pollutants generated.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Berkeley.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy, too, for bringing this to us.
Thanks for everything, Chase.
Um, excellent. Okay, so now we're going to move backwards, uh, on our agenda and go back to item number seven, which is the Fire Station Building Committee Update. And we have, uh, Mr. Clark with us. So welcome, Mr. Clark. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. And, uh, just wanted to start out by thanking the board for, uh, shuffling the schedule to accommodate, um, my schedule for personal reasons. So I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I, I don't know if you can see, but in the attendee list, Brian Walsh, who's the chair of the committee, has his hand raised. I think he might be trying to get into the panel.
Yes, um, I did not see. Is it, here he is. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Conlon. Good evening, Mr. Walsh. Thank you so much for joining us.
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, I guess I'm on now. Yeah, real quickly, I thank you for your time. Uh, we appreciate the fact the select board will spend some time, uh, with us on this. The FSBC continues to work hard on planning for 21st century fire stations. Uh, I will just make a couple of, uh, opening remarks here, but I want to quickly turn it over to Dan Clark, our vice chair, who's going to walk us through our slides. Uh, Dan has been doing a tremendous amount of work on behalf of the town on this project, as you will see in the presentation. We are fortunate really to have a tremendous group of talent on our committee in design, architecture, engineering and financial expertise. We continue to work hard on pricing to get the very uh, best and cost effective solutions for the town. In fact, your rep or your liaison to us, uh, member Richard Wells, uh, recently sat through one of our long, uh, cross discussions and I think he can attest to the diligence that we are putting, uh, but again, in, in, uh, deference to your time, I'd like to quickly turn it over to Dan Clark, who's going to walk through, uh, the slides tonight and then we're.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, just to start off, um, this, this presentation is meant to be kind of an update, looking back and kind of summarizing the whole process. Uh, our committee's uh, going on over three years now. Uh, so we really wanted to try to not spend too much time going back in history, but really summarizing the design portion, um, and the summary of that. Uh, since I think that's really the last time we came and presented to the select board was prior to our last town meeting article. Um, a little over two years ago at this point. So, um, the first thing I wanted to touch base on is just how we got to where we're at today, which is it all started with uh, a program and each of the stations has a program that is really a guiding document for what the station needs. It goes through the staffing, parking needs and then generates space needs, fire department needs. So this is a document that's really generated with our architect and our OPM in, in conjunction with the fire chief. Um, former chief Grant was the first person to go through this, uh, but we did take the opportunity to not reinvent the wheel, but did take a look at it with a new chief coming in, understanding that, uh, Chief Madden may have different operational viewpoints, uh, and trying to understand if there were any impacts on there. Um, minor things that most, um, more in design, um, preferences in the station, but not real substantial space needs. So this guiding document is how we then generate, you know, how many public restrooms do we need? How many offices do we need? What do we need for number of um, apparatus bays? What do we need for gear supply, fire, firefighters toilets, uh, all of those things? What's needed for training? Uh, and support pieces. And then from that, we can understand about how big they need to be, how many there need to be. And start to understand the scale and size of the, each of these buildings. Um, and you can see that kind of summarized across these slides here. Um, and then with that, um, there is, uh, kind of a rough sketch, uh, kind of a plug and play, kind of like building blocks of Legos coming together to understand how big is this building? How is it going to work? Um, so that's, that's the real starting point um, of understanding the shape, size and requirements of what's in this building. And this is meant to be a guiding document that we constantly refer back to when we're making design decisions. Well, why do we have this room or does it need to be that big or, um, you know, why do we need the conference room this size? And we go back to this and we really ask ourselves the questions, you know, is this what the town needs? Is this in the best interest, both short term and long term? So this is really, uh, a really important document to, to guide the whole design process. And there's one for each of the stations, um, that's generated. Uh, additionally, we generated what's called an owner's project requirements. And this is a guiding document to the architect and the OPM saying we as owners, uh, expect the following from this building. Um, and there's various components that go into that. What our requirements are, user requirements, uh, energy and sustainability goals, indoor air, in, indoor environmental air quality, you know, really important thing at this point in time, uh, equipment and system expectations. What kind of equipment do we want, uh, to be in this building? Um, how do we want it to function and operate? What are, uh, expect, what is our uh, expectations for life expectancy for equipment? Uh, because those are going to guide the cost. Um, you know, some towns may choose to spend less upfront knowing that they're going to have to replace equipment more often down the line or vice versa. So, um, our committee spent a lot of time focusing in on this. Um, I would say some of the big takeaways were, um, in the environmental and sustainability goals that we established, uh, we decided that uh, we wanted to be a LEED certifiable building, meaning if we were to spend the money to have the paperwork turned in, um, to the LEED council, we could achieve a LEED silver status. Uh, there's a lot of cost associated with that. It's a lot of paperwork tracking, a lot of um, processes that need to be put in place that just cost money. Um, so we as a committee thought it would be good to build towards that goal, but not actually get the certification and the plaque that comes along with it. Uh, we felt that was the best bang for the buck, uh, for the town, um, to go that direction. Um, other things that we elected to do is actually make this a, um, electric based building. Um, we have, you understand that photovoltaic cells could go on the roof. We could put them behind Atherton. Uh, so we spent a lot of time and debate, should this be a fossil fuel free building? Um, and we looked at the short term uh, operating costs and the upfront expense to understand what the payback would be. Uh, it costs a little bit more money upfront to put in an all electric building, uh, and the mechanical equipment that goes, goes into that. But there's a payback in the long term. Uh, we also looked at this project as being, um, the example for the town. Um, a lot of other towns in Massachusetts are electing to go fossil fuel free, uh, meaning no gas or oil, um, for the building. And while there's no requirement for that in Milton, uh, we thought that this fire station project could be a leading example um, for that. And that goes further. Um, you know, other communities like Brookline have established it, all their new buildings, regardless of their public or private. Um, you know, are going towards an electric model with no fossil fuels. So that's a decision that we've made and that was part of this, uh, owner's project requirements and understanding that, that we thought was um, important to, to mention. Um, we also, um, within this owner's project requirement, established indoor air quality requirements and that not only goes into the mechanical equipment, but also the material selection. So, um, one of the things that we pulled from was the living building challenge. Um, and they have a list of materials that are known carcinogenics or known off gassing materials, um, that can have impacts on air indoor quality. Um, and with the design concept of this fire station, which is something the existing stations lack extremely in their design, um, is keeping contaminants from when the firefighters were turned back from a fire that as soon as they get back, their dirty gear goes out, they can immediately take a shower, get the contaminants off of their body, get into clean clothes and then get into the other side of the station that's the clean side of the station. So you kind of have this natural flow. Um, and we wanted to take that further and keep the materials that are in the building uh, to kind of mimic that clean, uh, indoor air quality. So those are some of the pieces, um, that went into that. Um, it's a living document that carries through the whole project. Uh, so we may choose to update portions of it. Um, we may try to, uh, increase or decrease, um, what we have for requirements in there based on cost impact, based on um, design changes, based on new technologies that could be available when one of these projects goes to construction. So these are our real guiding documents for how we got to a design that we did today. Um, but then also a huge component to this was community feedback. Um, we hosted at different intervals through the process, community meetings. Um, pre-COVID, um, obviously in person, post-COVID, um, over Zoom. And, uh, both with the community, uh, both with the master planning implementation committee and other committees, um, to get feedback and really engage the community and all the stakeholders that have, have a stake in this. Um, so that we're getting that feedback throughout the design process and we're returning back with. um, you know, modifications and getting that feedback. I think the Headquarters Station is a really great example of that. The Town Center Neighborhood Association and the Fire Station Building Committee went back and forth, um, you know, for probably a nine-month period, making changes, um, getting feedback, um, understanding what their needs and pinch points were and, and making adjustments. And, um, I, I'm confident that wherever we go with the East Milton Station will be a similar process. Atherton being how it's located, um, didn't have nearly as much community engagement, but I still think it, uh, is going to be a great project. So just to kind of give a sense of where we're at the design process, the green, this, this is a timeline for a regular um, design project and construction. So the red portion is construction, green is design. We're only at this point in the design, obviously. Um, and in terms of how far through the design we are, Headquarters is, Headquarters and Atherton are through what's called Design Development Phase, which is, um, probably about.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Clark, Ms. Conlon.
Are we supposed to be seeing slides?
Right. Are there, are, do you have slides?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was sharing. I'm so sorry.
No, that, that's all right.
Madam Chair, while Mr. Clark loads the slides, I'm just, I'm going to turn off my video in my audio because I think we're going to go a little bit into project finance and a little bit into other aspects of this project. And just for the record, I am recused because this is going to be a project that goes out for bonding. And I work with the Towns Bond Council. I'm recused on parts of this project, but not on the location of the stations.
Ms. Ms. Conlon, I actually put that slide at the very end, knowing that, so I can, I can alert you. There's only one slide at the very end.
I'm going to listen, but I'm going to not participate in my video or audio at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my apologies for not, that not sharing. Um, I'll just go back. I mean, it's not, and there was just examples of what those slides look like. Um, that's the, um, space needs study, just some example pages from it, the owner's project requirements and what those documents kind of look like. Um, some information from our community feedback. Um, but the project update that I was talking about, the green portion on the left is the design phase. Um, and for Headquarters and Atherton, we're about 75% through. We're in design, through design development. Um, at the end of, uh, that phase, we went out to bid. So we, we have a sense of what the project costs are looking like. East Milton's been on a little bit different timeline because you can't really start designing something until you fully know where it's going. Uh, you can do the space needs and understand what it needs to be. So you know how big of a space and shape of a space that you need to put, be able to locate a building. Uh, and we got into the schematic design to be able to, uh, understand feasibility and do some due diligence related to some options, uh, that were presented to the committee, uh, in terms of locations. Uh, but that's where, really where we're at. Um, we, we want to hit the pause button on Headquarters and Atherton and not spend any additional money until we're given construction funding. And that's pretty typical in most projects. You don't design it 100% until you know you're actually going to build it. Um, you know, the plans are pretty well designed at this point. We know what it's going to look like, the materials, the shapes. Um, the final push is really so that, that Design Development to Construction Document is to make the project so you can hand it off to a contractor and they can do two things. One, they can bid it and know every little detail about it. Um, and secondly, so they can actually fully construct it. So we have enough to understand the cost, but not enough to actually bid it at this point. Um, so with that, I was going to go into each of the stations and do a quick update. Um, this is a rendering of the headquarters where we're at today. Um, this is looking from the back of Town Hall, so looking towards, um, the current front station. You can see on the right-hand side, this is the current main entrance and the two apparatus bays of the original. The existing apparatus bay would be over in this area here on the left-hand side. So, um, we've decided to do this in a way that we think that the existing station, uh, because this apparatus bay is over in here, uh, during construction, the existing station can stay operational. Uh, and that was a big point of our design intent was to keep that station operational, knowing how vital it is to the town and not wanting to spend money on temporary facilities or conditions and trying to figure out where to locate Headquarters Station while we're building a new one. Um, and I can share a little bit more about that in the phasing plan that I'll talk about in a little bit. This is looking from Walnut Street at the back of the station. You can see that there's one, uh, apparatus bay that has a pull-through for the ladder truck. The other ones are only front entrance. Um, this is really intended to be, um, parking for the firefighter, fire department. Um, this is intended to be a training space, um, so that they can use this as, um, training as a tower. Uh, park a vehicle in here, unroll their hoses and things like that. Um, so there's, there's a function to, um, that stair tower, um, as a dual-purpose second means of egress and a mezzanine, but also for training purposes, something that, uh, the town currently lacks, that, um, former Chief Grant and current Chief Madden, uh, thought was pretty vital for, um, the town to incorporate, uh, into the headquarters. One thing I did want to mention is, and I, I alluded to this previously, was that we spent a lot of time with the community, uh, around this area, understanding how we can fit in a new station. And, you know, these are five examples, uh, early on in the schematic design phase, how we really looked at a lot of options of where can we stick a fire station in this location? How is it going to work with the butters? How is it going to work with the stakeholders? And we went through numerous iterations of moving the headquarters back and forward and detaching from the old and detaching from the old. Um, and it was, you know, really a process. I think we probably went through almost 25 designs. Um, you know, as nuanced as what you see on the screen to as, um, you know, kind of outside the box thinking of placing the fire station in front of the current Town Hall. Um, we really left no stone unturned, uh, through this design process. But once it got further along, we started to reach out to the stakeholders and MPIC was a big stakeholder that we knew that we wanted to work with and understand that two things. One, our station was kind of fitting within their master plan, and then also we weren't causing any detrimental impact long-term for the master plan that we would preclude them from trying to accomplish one of their goals by the way that we designed our station. So with that, we had, um, worked with MPIC to understand what their master plan goals could look like. And that, they came up with a concept plan on the right that you see. And it worked pretty well. Um, there were some minor nuanced changes in terms of parking lots and, um, pulling some sidewalks around and getting some more, um, space. And I think you've recently heard from MPIC, uh, on their updates. And I know that Chair, um, Ms. Conlon and, and now Mr. Doyle are, um, participating in that, that I think that you guys have been given a pretty good update on that. But I think it was a good process. I think that we learned a lot from it and that, uh, we were able to make modifications to fit within the long-term plans of, uh, the master plan. So in terms of what the station looks like floor plan rise, um, this shows it best where we're looking to have a five-bay apparatus, um, with the gear, um, the training tower over here, storage and lockers. Um, and this is what I was talking about. When the, when the trucks come back, you can see there's decontamination here where they come through, they get rid of their, um, contaminated equipment. They can immediately get to lockers where they have clean clothes and showers and get decontaminated and then come through to the living space and the admin offices to get up the stairs and go back on the second floor to their, their rooms. So that's something that the current stations all lack, having that kind of separate space and that natural flow so that you can achieve that. So that's something that we spent a lot of time in our, in our design iterations and focusing on. And that's really one of the biggest differences in standards in the newer stations. Um, something that we did identify in our program was the need for the fire department to have a training room, conference room where they can, um, all need. And when we started looking at that and something that we learned from visiting other stations, uh, we've visited over seven or eight stations at this point, um, is that some of the stations have elected to make this training room, uh, in the design process somehow accessible to the public. So putting it in the back corner with its own entrance and lobby. And one of the things we identified is that we could reuse, um, the old existing station on the first floor, uh, to achieve that. And pull it out so that it's, it's part of the fire department, but it's still accessible and you don't have to go through the fire department to get to it. So we see this as a community asset that when the fire department doesn't need the space, that it could be used by committees like the Select Board or the Fire Station Building Committee. Uh, and we identified that meeting space, uh, good meeting space is hard to come by. Pre-COVID, obviously, uh, was something we always were challenged with. So we thought it was important to try to make this an asset to the community beyond just a community asset for the fire department. Um, you can see on the second floor, these are all, you know, kitchen and dayroom, um, and dormitories on the second floor. And then in terms of what exactly the building is going to look like, um, we went through a lot of iterations of how to, how this should work. And we ended up going off of what we thought was a very successful project in the library in terms of finding materials that complemented, um, the older portion of the building, uh, but then also accented. So we really wanted to include some masonry brick. We wanted to mimic, uh, some of the limestone banding that you see. Um, but then the apparatus bay, kind of a newer portion, as you get farther away from the old building, more modern materials, metal roof panels, ton group wood paneling, curtain wall, glass. Um, it is something that we really wanted to focus on. So then moving to Atherton, um, you know, very similar design process for this. We went through a lot of options. Um, and this is where we're at today. Uh, we have this one rendering that show us, you know, with an addition off the side, a new apparatus bay, living space above, renovating, uh, the space above the old, uh, apparatus bays, and then converting these to overflow storage for the fire department. And similar to the Headquarters Station, we went through numerous iterations of design. We looked at putting it behind and in front, and on the side, we looked at demolishing the old one and building new. Um, and really ended up getting away from that because there wasn't a substantial cost savings to demolishing and building new, um, composed, as opposed to renovating and putting an addition on. And we thought it was vital for the community, which has few of its original buildings left, um, to keep this building and make an example of what you can do with these older buildings. Um, and that's how we ended up with the design that we have today.
And Dan.
So this is a proposed site plan.
Yes, I just want to point out to the Select Board that the Historical Commission was very, uh, happy and excited to see how we were able to maintain that, uh, old, old structure of the Atherton Street and make it. I just wanted to get that in.
Yes, thanks, Brian. Um, additionally, I mentioned earlier that, uh, we're, we see the opportunity for photovoltaic cells to be able to fit in the back space here. Um, it actually, through a sunlight study, it actually gets quite a bit of light, um, with the way the topography works. Um, and putting parking in the back, and then you can see the new building here and then keeping this front apron. Um, we did have discussions with Allison Quinn from the Planning Department, understanding that the parcel directly to the south on 138 is going to be a daycare. We were able to understand, um, their long-term plans and our long-term plans and, and, and understand how the two are going to work together. I know Chief Madden was also able to weigh in on that. So knowing that that is coming, um, we know that they probably, or that we know that they're able to work in conjunction with each other. In terms of what the Atherton Station looks like, um, you know, here are the three plans. There's given the, there's a big slope and topography on that site. So we actually have, um, the old basement space that gets turned into our mechanical. We build a new entrance on the back, um, as the parking lots at the back, um, a gym in the basement. Uh, and then you come up to what the first floor is that, um, storage apparatus bay, decontamination space. And then you can come up the stairs into living quarters. Um, and so everything in these gray boxes that you see on the first and ground floor plans are existing renovated space, um, that mirrors up to the second floor. So we're doing an addition off this back and then an apparatus bay on the side. Um, in terms of the materials, really wanted to be true to the original building, the historic fabric of it. Um, so mimicking that existing rubble stone foundation, um, and, um, cedar shingles. Um, you know, still trying to determine exactly the colors and things like that, but those are the general materials that we wanted to go with. Um, and then accent it slightly with, um, a shiplapp clappard siding, um, on portion of the building, but really drawing from those original colors, um, for the building. As for East Milton, um, just a minor update on this, I think East Milton is going to be, um, part two of our update to the Select Board. Um, this is going to need further discussion. We have a little bit more work to do on it. But I did want to summarize a couple of points is we've spent an exhaustive amount of time looking at the existing station location. We've looked at it and said it's not going to work and then come back to it and, you know, looked at it differently. And we've done that three or four times and we just can't figure out a way to make it feasible, um, in the best interest of the town. Uh, we can do a renovation and a small addition. And that's the yellow box that you see here. Um, basically the only space that we have to do a renovation would be for a stair tower, uh, a second means of egress, which is code required. The cost to do this renovation, uh, and that addition, because the, the way the building is constructed, um, our structural engineers have, have informed us that we're looking at an, uh, probably about a 30 to 40% premium to go this direction as opposed to new construction. And on top of that, it, there's a premium and you're actually getting less. We won't be able to accomplish all the goals listed in the program. So that document that we came up with at the very beginning that I talked about, um, lists out all the things that we really need in this station. Um, we would have to take some of those out. Uh, so we're spending more money to get less and it, our committee just can't, um, knowing that there's other options out there for this committee to make recommendation to the Select Board and good faith bring that forward. So I don't expect unless other options are exhausted that our committee would be coming back with a recommendation to reuse the existing site. So with that, I wanted to make sure that we remembered that many, many years ago now, um, we did a time, a runtime analysis to understand what relocating engine two in East Milton would look like. Um, the most viable option we knew was probably going to be to the west of the deck. Um, and so that was one thing that we really wanted to focus on. And the big takeaways from that study were, you know, there's, in terms of the four-minute runtime, um, you know, there's really a negligible impact on it. Um, there is a negligible change in call volume distribution. It doesn't impact the second engine do how the fire department operates today. And then we also learned that 75% of the calls for the East Milton Fire District are already on the west side of I-93. And that moving the station to the west puts it in a more geographic centering within the fire district. So we don't have concerns about pulling this fire station from the east side to the west side in terms of being able to operate and respond to the needs of the community within that fire district. The last item that I have on East Milton is, um, a document that's currently a living document. Uh, it's not final. Um, we keep having discussion points, but it's really meant to be a graphical take-home where these are all the sites that we've looked at, um, for the most part today. Some were ruled out without even getting here. And then there's some sites down here on the bottom of options that we looked at that were either ruled out because they just weren't good options for the fire department. Um, the property owner didn't want to consider it. Uh, or it was ruled out prior to us, um, our committee being formal. But what I did want to share with this is that if you look at this, um, and it, it really is not meant to be um, a comparison amongst each other. It's meant to be a comparison to the ideal design. So our, our architect put this together. In an ideal world, if we had a perfect lot, a perfect space to put this, how do these sites rank compared to that perfect scenario? Knowing that there is no, you know, 100 out of 100 perfect scenario if you evaluate something. So it's meant to be green means that it's great. Yellow means that it's okay and red means it's not great. It's not a good fit. So you're meant to be able to look at this as a graphical representation of where should we really be focusing our time? Where should we be doing additional due diligence and really focusing our efforts? And the takeaway from this was, even though it's not a great location, um, you know, the existing site is still better than some of the other sites that we were able to find. Um, which I think says a Um, which I think says a lot to trying to locate this station in the East Milton Fire District. It's not an easy task. Through the RFP process, um, that we solicited, we requested for private landowners, um, people who are landowners to submit proposals for land leases or land sales, uh, for the East Milton Fire District. And we did get several responses, um, some of them are, uh, down here, Granite Ave, Edge Hill. Um, I think one of the ones under the additional sites considered, uh, but the one that really came to the forefront was the St. Agatha's Adam Street Lot. Um, we haven't fully done the due diligence on that. There's still more work to do, but I did want to bring that to the committee's attention that um, we have an additional update to focus on this E- East Milton and have a further discussion on this matrix, um, really focusing in on what our options are. Um, but we're not quite there yet, but I wanted to give you guys that preview and know that it's coming. Um, so you're not completely blindsided by it, um, probably when we come back in two weeks. Um, with that, if Chair, if, uh, Ms. Conlon's still listening, I was going to pull up a budget slide. Um, so I'll just give her a second.
Thank you, Dan. I'm listening. Please feel free to go ahead.
I'm, I'm good.
Al- also, um, uh, Mr. Clark, I, I think, uh, Mr. McAuliffe is here. I didn't know if you asked him to be here and if you'd like him to be promoted.
Uh, I hadn't, but if he wanted to chime in, I'm happy to let him.
Okay.
Uh, in terms of where we're at on budget, our committee last night, um, approved this budget that, um, is going to be our guiding document. There's a little bit more work to do on it, but I wanted to share it because it, it lists out, you know, in detail what the construction costs are, the architecture fees, um, furniture and fixtures. But the big takeaway, I wanted the committee to know today that we're somewhere in the neighborhood of a thirty million dollar project for all three buildings. Um, that number may move up or down as we finalize these numbers, as we finalize the design. But that's the order of magnitude that we're talking about. And the biggest impact on that is going to be as we work over the next couple of weeks is with town treasurer, town accountant, um, Mr. Dennehy and others, the select board is uh, within the funding mechanism, and that's why this is part two of the update is, uh, we need to understand how the funding mechanism for Article forty could work for this project and how that impacts the timeline, because as you can see here, uh, depending on when we can do each of these projects, there's escalation in terms of um, starting this project, for example, for East Milton, you know, starting it today versus in August of twenty-four. There's a seven hundred thousand dollar premium starting at, um, three and a, three years later. So um, that's the next piece to be finalized on that. And that's really along with East Milton, a separate update that's a longer discussion. Um, and so I did want to make you aware of where we're at, so you know it's coming, um. But I, I don't know if I, if we're quite prepared yet to get into a deep discussion on the mechanism of the funding, on how we plan to fund it and the timeline. But with that, those are all the slides that we have, um, happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Um, I, I, uh, if we, if we could, if you could unshare your screen so I could actually see all the members so that I can see who, who has questions and, um, so thi- this has a lot to do with the February town meeting, which I, I'll, I'll just state at the moment, it is on February first. And, um, I have serious concerns about us making that date. Um, and so I'll, I'll just say that now, uh, we don't have a location. Uh, and, and haven't, so have, haven't negotiated anything around that, signed anything, um, don't have design for the location. Um, and, and, and don't have, uh, funding laid out. So I, I'm I'm thinking about, uh, we'll be talking about that later, but maybe pushing it out just a, 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 a couple of weeks to give everybody some time. But, uh, but do members have, um, questions that they would like to, to ask, um, or comments they'd like to make? Uh, Mr. Wells, did you raise your hand?
I do, Madam Chair, but I'll go last. I, I, cause I want to hear what the other members have to say first.
Okay. Oh, it doesn't look as if.
Wow, well pressed. Nice job. So, um,
Oh.
I just want to ask you a question.
Yeah, a- actually, he's just unmuted, so.
Madam Chair, I just want to ask you a quick question. When you talk putting off a couple of weeks, are you talking perhaps pushing the February town meeting back two more weeks? Is that what you're referring to?
Basically, I mean, it would be, it would, it would be the end of February, um.
Then maybe what, what do you think, Brian?
I'm off mood. Actually, we, we were going to, uh, uh, rest the, this whole concern about which meeting, a special meeting in February. Uh, we would very, very much like to be ready to do it for that. We are also quite aware of the fact that we're the only ones that are going to be on that agenda, uh, is my understanding is that.
Yeah.
That's not true?
No.
Okay, all right. Uh, we would very much then like to try to meet that and we'll know ahead of time. Dan referenced earlier, and I don't know if we established it with, with you all, but uh, we're hoping that we can come into your next meeting two weeks from now and have some more definitive answers on this East Milton stuff air. And I think what we were trying to communicate with the slides that he showed, especially the last few was we're pretty close on the costs, um, and, and discussions are, are underway, but we'd like to come back in two weeks. Could we do that? And then if you're going to postpone to the end of February anyway, if you, uh, the flexibility you might need, I, I love Madam Chair. Is that, that's really yours?
Um, Madam, Madam Chair, I was going to say, my, my takeaway would be, um, I think strongly within two weeks, we would know if we would be ready for a town meeting at any point in February, or if we would need to withdraw our article until May.
Okay, because the article we have at the moment has a headquarters and a substation and, um, you know, I, I have to say personally, I feel comfortable with those two. Um, it's not that you haven't done work on East Milton Square. I know you've been, been working very hard on that, but, um, but, and I understand that, that with the time value of money, it's more expensive, but I, it, it also, so is debt service, right? For something that you're not, that, that you don't, that we don't have quite the, the, um, the solidity on as the other two. So, um, but we haven't quite gotten there, but hearing what, what you're saying, I think is important to the board as we, when, when we go to that agenda item for February, um, and, uh, so, so that I, I, I think we'd all very much like to have you back in two weeks. Um, but if, if you just would give me a moment, Mr. Zulus hasn't had a chance to speak yet and, and, um, so.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you for, uh, a very helpful presentation, um, uh, really helpful. And, and if we could have that, I don't know if you posted that, but, but if we can have that after the meeting, that'd be great. Um, because that's, that's really helpful, put together very well. Um, my, my only comment is on the, uh, recently passed CPA of, uh, just over a month ago. And so I would just ask you to, uh, ask your architect or whomever else you need to help, and whether it's Mallison Quinn or someone else who has experience, uh, with CPA funding, to look into those aspects of the project that we could use for that because you know, uh, there will be up to seven hundred thousand dollars a year in bonding potential uh, for this, um, you know, presuming a CPA committee went along with it, but given the, 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 the need for these fire stations, I would hope that, that a committee would go along with it. There will be about seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, up to a seven hundred thousand dollars in bonding potential for historic buildings, uh, and, and so I'd ask you to, to, to do your best to, uh, to, uh, see how much you can use for that. Um, and then related to that, um, you mentioned, um, East Milton, uh, and the thirty-four, thirty to forty percent premium to use the existing site. Presumably you could, uh, the difference, uh, between the existing site and a new structure is you could use CPA funds for the existing site, given if it's a, that it's a, an historic building. And so, so I wonder if that would have an impact on it. It's not a question. It's just really kind of, it's a, it's a, it's a thought. Uh, as you go forward to the extent that you, you think you can, uh, use CPA funds for that E- East Milton, uh, for the existing station, would that have an impact on your matrix and on the decision-making? So those are really thoughts more than questions, but I appreciate the presentations. Very helpful.
I, I can actually answer those for you, Mike. Um, we hadn't considered, um, CPA for the existing site, uh, for East Milton at that time, but it's something that, uh, is a good point and, uh, we'll circle back with on our, with our architect. Um, knowing that CPA had passed, um, I did spend some time with our architect who has a, a pretty extensive, and this is one of the reasons why we selected this architect over others is um, about half of their work is historic. Um, a good example is they did the, um, Arle- Arlington has two historic, um, fire stations that they renovated both. So, um, knowing that we were going to be going down that route with at least half of our stations um, is why we decided to go with them. But I did ask them to look at the cost impact and what, what portions, uh, our OPM and our architect looked at, what portions of these projects would qualify in their experience for CPA funds. Um, and they came up with a dollar value of around eight hundred thousand. Um, just because there are strict definitions in terms of what, what does and doesn't qualify in terms of historic preservation. Um, so that is something that we haven't, uh, accounted for in our budgeting or our funding. Um, we thought it was wise, knowing the timing of our projects and the CPA that we thought it would be beneficial to kind of plan for the worst and hope for the best and be able to take it that way. But if the select board would wanted to advise us to treat that differently, we hap- happily would. Um, but I'm not sure if that's the best course or not.
Do, do you mean, Dan, in terms of, in terms of sketching out your budget?
Yes, in terms of the funding mechanism and, and looking at it.
You know, I, I, you know, I, I don't know if it's too much work, but if you could do alternatives. Because, you know, we don't know, it's, it's, it'll be up to a CPA committee to decide how the funds are spent. But if you, if you could, if you could have alternative budgets, this is if it's, if CPA is included, this is if it's not. I think that would be helpful. And I don't mean to create more work, but that might be.
No, it's, 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 it's a line item that we can add to the budgets. Um, so it's, it's certainly something that we can incorporate.
Thank you.
Oh, um, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I also want to point out, you know, the, the, I guess I would like to say in a perfect world, when we go before town meeting, regardless of the date, we would like to go with the full budget for all three buildings, right? In a perfect world. Uh, not, we are pretty well cooked on headquarters and Atherton Street. Um, but it, it, it isn't just a budgetary process. It's a, it's a whole timing thing. If we only go with two now, uh, we might miss the advantage of having construction being done simultaneous where we can save some costs. And another really of all the complexities, and there are lots of them. You, you mentioned some of them, the delayed costs and the, the cost of delay. The irony is, is we're getting feedback now that because of the pandemic, there is some cost reductions going on that would indicate you should speed up uh, the process to get shovels in the ground. And so we're weighing all of those in a perfect world. We'd like to come in with the full budget, three buildings for that, for a town meeting. Um, with, we think we're going to have a better stronger feel about all of that when we come back in two weeks.
So that would be great. Mr. Doyle?
I would just like to, uh, reinforce Brian's point about the ideal of putting the entire package before town meeting.
Thank you.
I, I switched my hats from select board to town meeting. And as a town meeting member, that would be my expectation. As a town meeting member from precinct, uh, seven and East Milton, and previously in precinct six, um, doubly so.
Thank you. Right, so we're looking forward to having you back in two weeks. Uh, yes, Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a couple of points that Dan didn't touch. First off, to, to echo, uh, Chair Walsh's point, this is one of the committees that I attend that I usually don't want to talk. I just want to listen. And, um, we do have a wealth of expertise, not just in the town, but in massive projects. Um, Brian's correct in his assumption that, you know, Dan has put your own work on this. Uh, to Mr. Zulus's point, as Dan recalls when he first met me, I think I was still police chief from this, from this was, um, I was a strong advocate of keeping Engine Two where it was. But it's more that I looked at the history of uh, and the tradition of the fire service as well as the cancer hazards exist today. Um, you know, most people, even though I wasn't a fireman, I spent a lot of time at fire stations, particularly Engine Two from the time I was a kid. The water fountain and the stopoff was, you know, I think for every kid walking home in those days and, uh, had the coldest water in the square. And like, they've covered things like public restrooms. I don't think any of you here have any idea. Uh, maybe a town hall, but, but the police stations, the fire stations, how many people use the public restrooms there a day? It's, it's, you'd be shocked. It's amazing, um, especially like an Engine Two. But I, I was a big advocate of keeping it there. But the more I looked at it and the more I looked at the needs for Twenty First Century firefighting, though I came to, to understand why it had to be located elsewhere and have come to truly embrace the St. Agatha's location as being the ideal, as the ideal location. You've heard me say that before. Um, you know, I, I'm with Arthur. I think this has to be a whole package. As, as Brian noted, as Chair Walsh noted that, um, because of COVID, we may be able to reap a little bit of, if we do this all at once, you know, one project built simultaneously. Um, the way that Mr. Clark has laid this out in, in utilizing both um, headquarters and if we can work out the East Milton deal, come to a final agreement, you'll be able to build the new stations while continuing to utilize the old ones, which save you immense money and not having to build temporary structures for a couple of years each. And that's, you know, that's a big savings for the citizens of the town. Um, the last thing I will say with regard to Engine Four on Atherton Street, looking at it, Katie can relate to this is when I think of former resident Chris Tingas, who stood in front of that closed firehouse for God, I don't even know how many years when it was closed. Brian, you remember this, was it twenty years ago? I mean, he stood there every, every parade, every town meeting, open Engine Four, open Engine Four. Um, he probably have a huge smile on his face today if he saw the design for the fire stations intended to go in, um, to that facility today in the Twenty First Century. So um, I am very confident that, that this committee is going to bring something before each of us that will be and to lastly, to Mr. Zulus's point, I know the goal has been, and Amy and Dan have done a lot of work on this, is trying to make this whole project work underneath the cap of Article forty, which was, which was designed for that. Perhaps now with CPA, if that can't be done, is my only hesitation for, for the, Mr. Zulus and everyone who works so hard to pass CPA is that if they don't have to use it right away and we can use it for something else, I'd really be happy with that. But if it could help to offset a button, oh, particularly with headquarters, um, I, and I get your thoughts on Engine Two, Michael, but it just, um, I, I, I think ever, the more, if you were to spend the time listening to these design, you know, all the work this team's done, and particularly the architect, the OPM, old chief Grant and chief Madden, you realize that just it just isn't a big enough footprint to get what those firefighters need. And, and I can't uh, forget one widow of, and I, and I never thought of this in my life, because these are all firefighters from my father's era, you know, the, coming on in the fifties, sixties and seventies, you know. Is how many of them that I knew growing up, particularly those that stationed Engine Two? Each of them died of cancer. Every single one. And one of those widows who came to me and said, don't ever let those fight. And she, and she was right, not even knowing the technicalities that other requirements that Chief Madden and Chief Grant are aware that firefighters have to work today. Full side and, and clean side and, and dirty sides that, um, we need to give them the best facility possible because cancer is a national issue for fire service in this country.
I, I, I think everyone, uh, uh, knows and, and agrees with that, um, and is, is dedicated to this. I, I just have one, one sort of procedural question. So from a legal perspective, in, in order in order to go to town meeting, wouldn't the select board have to have entered into a contract? Right. I just want to make sure that that's clear, because how can we go to town meeting? No?
No.
I don't know if it's a contract, though. We'll have to have a.
No, you don't have to be entered into a contract because you actually need town meeting approval to enter into a 99-year lease. Anything over thirty, select board would need town meeting approval. So.
Right, it's a 99-year lease. Okay.
Yeah, so that's what, if we were to go that direction, that is one of our options. So that's what you're asking for at town meeting is the authority to go forward to enter into a 99-year ground lease.
Mr. Walsh?
If I could, clearly, we would want in your support for anything that we brought before town meetings. I mean, the support, so you would probably want to take it, even if it were a lease, then we'd want to have the details down to a point where you could support it and take a vote and action. So before town meeting, I mean, that's obviously the powerful stance. The select board, you know, supports the motion.
Right. That was really where I was going with that. Yes, Ms. Conlon?
So, Madam Chair, I, you know, I've got to walk a fine line here. So I'm not going to weigh in on the aspect of stages versus the whole project going in February. That's, I think I have to be recused on that. But on the location of the East Milton Fire Station, two things. One, on that last point about the 99-year lease, would that not be the select board putting forward an article rather than the Fire Building Committee on that? So I think that's something that we're going to have to have a lot of discussion about. And, you know, and to that point. Okay, so, so to that point, I think we're going to need to have some further discussion, maybe sooner rather than later, if the goal is to really go forward in February here, to, you know, about whether the St. Agath location is the one that makes sense or not. Because I think our board's going to have to really weigh in on that and be involved in that discussion.
Yeah.
Personally, you know, Richard said that he at one point was very much in favor of using the current building. I was too, and I I'm actually still open to the current location. And I know that the Fire Building Committee is really not and wants to focus more on St. Agath as or another site. But, you know, there's a fire station on Atlantic Avenue in Boston that's built into an office building and with a lot of plans going on for East Milton Square at this time. I wonder whether it doesn't make sense to explore the current location as part of a commercial development that might encompass that lot and some other properties there. As we have an East Milton working group, and we've talked in the past about maybe combining parcels. So I still think that there may be some more discussion that needs to be had on the East Milton location. But in any event, the St. Agath location, I think the board needs to have some follow-up discussion on. And we're going to need to know some details, and that might be an executive session discussion.
But, Ms. Conlon, the one thing I'd say to that is, yes, that was always our intent, was to bring a recommendation from our committee for you to pursue that option. Wasn't our intent to have that via our article. And that was something we reviewed with the Town Council. And then I think our next meeting will go into a lot more detail of why our committee believes that reusing the existing site isn't feasible. And we'll have some additional information. It's beyond just the site. We did take time to look at abiding parcels and things like that and those impacts. So we'll be able to get into a much deeper discussion. But I did want to at least give a little update. And I think, you know, this was a forty-five minute update on those two stations. I think I can give another forty-five minute update just on East Milton alone. So we kind of broke them up because we weren't quite ready for East Milton either.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I just want to respond to Ms. Collins' comments. So and granted, she's just hearing, and I, as you know, Dan and Brian, I've spent Yoman's time on this. I actually brought former Commissioner Finn from Boston, very good friends with the book at that station. Though the station she's referring to on Atlantic Ave was part of the mitigation of the Rose Kennedy Greenway. And they had just opportunities for size and spacing development that we just don't have on the square. The problem is, I mean, right, maybe in an ideal world, you'd take a massive piece of, you'd have to take a pretty significant piece of the square to put what is needed there. I mean, I know the committee, I'm rehashing to Dan and Brian, they talked about trying to take one building by eminent domain. It just wasn't enough. It just, and the other thing, Katie, that most people don't think of. And I never really thought of it until I looked at it from a public safety point of view. In the 21st century, why would you put a critical response fire station in the worst choke point you could possibly put for traffic that it is today? And if you watch how that, those apparatus struggle to get out of that fire station in the both AM and the PM commute, you come to the realization that it's just not the place for 21st century facility. Where response, as they noted in their times, is very critical. And both Chief Grant and Chief Madden came to realization of this. Didn't take a lot of time. So I hear you on a case. And as I said, it was my intention as a historian, you know, traditionally in the beginning. But when I looked at it from an operational lead, I knew it was like, it's not the place for it to be.
Yes, Ms. Conlon. And I understand that there are pros and cons. I agree with that. I think there's just going to be, I've heard from town meeting members who think it should remain in the current location. So I think there are going to be town meeting members who have that question. And, you know, before this board weighs in on anything, we're going to need to fully vet it. And because town meeting is a certain, town meeting members are definitely going to vet it. As our former moderator knows, there'll be a lot of questions on a project of this magnitude. There's also an argument that freeing up that building for potentially commercial space or mixed-use space would be a positive as well. So I think there's arguments on both sides of it. I would like to hear from Chief Madden, since he is new to the role. And I know where Chief Grant stood. Sometimes there are differences of opinions in fire departments. And I think it would be helpful for the board to hear from Chief Madden at some point on this. But I appreciate hearing the information tonight. It was a good presentation to listen to. Thank you for the information.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Zulus has been, yeah, so I'd like to give him a chance to speak.
Oh, well, Brian, you can go ahead. I, that's fine. No, go ahead, Brian.
I just wanted to say, it's timely. I'm really comfortable, Ms. Conlon, that we can address to your satisfaction as we dig deep into East Milton. We have spent more hours as a committee on East Milton, I think. I think at the very beginning, looking at two stations, not three, so we wouldn't have that choke point in East Milton. It goes on and on and on, that one graph, and Dan will make sure that you have that slide that shows you all the considerations, that, let's call it the polka dot graph. And look at all, we spend time in every one of those locations. We wouldn't have spent the kind of time we'd had on those if we hadn't felt so strongly that the current location is not ideal for the town. Here's the bottom line. I feel we can present to you and address those questions. I also feel confident that we can address those questions from town meeting members that might have that concern. Address them satisfactorily.
Thank you. Mr. Zulus?
So I just want to briefly respond to what Arthur had said about the whole project. And I understand the desire to present the whole project and to start the whole project and to have the whole project going. But because of the critical need here to do something as quickly as possible for our firefighters, if East Milton is not baked, I would be in favor of moving forward as quickly as possible on the other two. So I think it's important to get going. And if we, I wouldn't want to hold things up because we haven't come to ground on East Milton. So that's my thought right now. And there's probably, you know, we'll, you know, you have to balance the financing versus the cost. But I do think we need to move on this. And I think everyone agrees on that. But I just don't want to hold up the other two if we're kind of mired in the East Milton issue for a while. So that was the only point that I wanted to make.
I'll take one more comment. And I just want to note, it's nine forty, and we have a lot of other agenda items. And since, if it can wait, I'm, no, I'm happy. I was going to say, I'll take you, Mr. Walsh, and then, but I think.
One quick comment. My biggest fear going forward with just the two stations and not East Milton is that East Milton, as you all know, is a very powerful voting block in the town. And I fear that they won't support us going forward to do those two stations since East Milton's not counted. Some of them will look at and say, oh, you've still got this junky old station in East Milton. Others will say, why didn't you solve that? And so that's the risk. And that's, you know, that's, there's always things to consider. But my concern would be that we won't get the support town-wide to spend the money we'll take, which is the majority of the money for the other two stations, right? Two out of three. So forward with those if we don't have that third station. But it's an opinion, and, you know, everyone's entitled to this. Thank you. I'm sorry for taking up so much time.
No, no, no. This is so important, and we're all so interested. So we really appreciate all of your time and work. And thinking through this with us, because of course, we haven't all been on the journey like Richard. So I think we all really appreciate that. And I just, since you're going to be back with us in two weeks, that's very hopeful. And so I would suggest that not only we have an update, but we have an executive session scheduled because I anticipate, I'm going into this with a positive frame that will have something to discuss. If we don't, we don't. But we'll schedule that. Okay. And I did want to acknowledge that Chief Madden and our treasured Jim McCollough were both here. And I do appreciate your attendance. And Jim, especially because we didn't know if you would get pressed into service to answer questions. So we really appreciate your time.
We do have a meeting tomorrow set up for bonding, one o'clock with our financial advisor.
Oh, great.
He's going to be on the call, Mike's going to be on the call, and possibly the town accountant.
Okay. Wonderful. Oh, well, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. I think with that, I'll just say thank you again, Mr. Clark and Mr. Walsh as well for joining us and all your work in the presentation and thinking through this with us.
And Madam Chair, I'll keep you updated, you know, between now and if for some reason we know we're not going to need that meeting or, you know, we'll definitely keep you updated between now and the next two weeks.
Thank you. Because even though there are other articles, it's not clear, you know, if you're not going to be ready, it's not clear that we would still be, you know, going ahead. But well, we're weighing all those options. So thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Richard, for your work being the liaison. We do appreciate it. Okay. And so we have Mr. Zerwinski, our planning director, and Ms. Quinn, our assistant town planner. Thank you both for your extreme patience. I feel as if you're always having to exercise a lot of patience when you come to meet with us. You always end up waiting quite a while. So item number twelve is a discussion and possibly approval, but I'm not sure if we're quite there yet, on an open space and recreation plan committee appointment. And Mr. Dennehy, I don't know if you have anything to say before Mr. Zerwinski addresses us?
I do not, Madam Chair. No.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to welcome Tim and Allison, both two of the hottest working civil servants we have in Milton. So.
Yeah, absolutely. We all appreciate them and all the work they do, hitting the ground running too, both of them. So, Mr. Zerwinski, if you would like to give us some background, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Absolutely, Chair Collins. Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, tremendous. So thanks for having me, Chair Collins, member of the board. Hopefully, you all have the letter that I drafted on November nineteenth describing the need for a update to Milton's Open Space and Recreation Plan. So if you read that, hopefully, this is all just old news to you at this point. But the Open Space and Recreation Plan hasn't been updated since 2006. There's no requirement for the town to have an open space and recreation plan, but it is good planning practice. There are guidelines that the Commonwealth has for what these plans need to accomplish. And if you do accomplish them, it really opens up a doorway to increase technical assistance and funding opportunities for parks acquisition, parks maintenance, conservation space acquisition, all sorts of grant programs that the Commonwealth has that are only available to cities and towns that have an active and updated open space and recreation plan. Beyond that, you know, the fundamental issue of good planning practice and the opportunities for grant funding. With the passage of CPA, it's, I think, critically important to, you know, give that CPA committee and the select board and town meeting as good of a bit of information as they can get of what are the town's open space needs, what are the types of projects that we should be, you know, sending CPA money towards so that, you know, again, that committee has a really strong planning foundation for their decision-making process. And then I think finally, you know, this is something that, you know, Allison and myself have been talking about, you know, since I arrived at the end of July, as we've been, you know, evaluating the 40B proposals and kind of looking at different options for achieving the goals of the housing production plan. You know, one of them is inventorying town-owned parcels. And obviously, we all know the schools and the fire stations and the public buildings and the libraries, all of the public parks that we have. But there's a number of public parcels that, you know, are either owned by parks or are conservation land or, you know, have some other sort of custody issue. And they may or may not be good development sites, but it's, before we even have the conversation of, you know, how do we, you know, use these parcels for, you know, other needs, higher and better uses than perhaps they're currently contemplated? It really is critically important to determine what the town's long-term open space and recreation needs are before we have a conversation about, you know, potentially taking property out of parks custody for, you know, potentially affordable housing development or other needs. You know, that's a kind of one specific example, but it really is of a piece with evaluating all of the aspects of the town's land ownership portfolio. You know, the town owns land. What are our plans for it? The open space plan is kind of one big chunk of that that I think is really important to really get right. So the letter I sent on November nineteenth makes a request for this board to seek nominations to form an open space and recreation plan committee. This is guidance that comes from the Commonwealth. There's no, again, you know, towns can do what they want. And it's up to the Commonwealth to approve their plan. But they do offer a really good amount of guidance as to how this thing should get done. And one of the first pieces of information that they give is you really should form a committee. So you've got stakeholders both inside and outside of government to perform three kind of primary tasks, devising the scope of the updated open space and recreation plan, determining, you know, my letter says, draft a request for proposals. One of the first decisions the committee needs to make is, is this something that we want to handle in-house on a volunteer basis, which is what we've done in the past? Or do we want to seek outside help from a consultant? There's a number of consultants that do this work. There's a number of towns that, you know, have done it both ways, you know, volunteers or bringing in a consultant. But if the decision is made to go that route to draft a request for proposals or whatever other procurement procedure for engaging the services of that consultant. And then, you know, either guiding and assisting that consultant or doing the work of the open space plan, which, you know, has many different components in terms of inventorying existing open space, you know, trying to delve into the history of open space land use in the town, cataloging the ecology of the town. Chair Collins, you were involved in the last open space update. So hopefully, this is near and dear to your heart. But it really is something that I think is overdue. And I would ask the board to seek nominations. The recommendations I have in my letter are kind of a combination of different pieces of guidance that the Commonwealth gives about the composition of this type of committee. It can be as many as, you know, fifteen or twenty folks or as few as, you know, half a dozen. But I think the suggestions that I make, I think, strike the right balance of bringing in enough people that are stakeholders on the public side as well as community members. And so, you know, the recommendation Um, and so, you know, the, the, the recommendation, uh, you know, would be a member of the conservation commission, a member of the board of parks commissioners, a member of the planning board, a member of the select board, a member of the historical commission, um, a member of the CPA committee, um, if and when that, um, committee will, if, when that committee is formed. And then two resident members, um, you know, one of which is someone with an interest or expertise in playgrounds and recreation. And another resident member with interest, um, or expertise in, in local ecology. Um, it, it's really important to bring, uh, the public into this process, um, you know, both through membership on the committee and also as we determine what the community outreach process is going to be. Um, and I think those are two areas that, um, you know, we've got a lot of really good expertise, both in the elected and appointed officials and then town staff. Um, but I think those are two areas where, um, you know, members of the public have been really engaged, um, kind of in a, a freelance fashion and then to sort of bring them into a formal process, I think would be a real, uh, a real benefit. So, um, uh, my department, uh, is, is 100% uh, behind, uh, providing staff support to this committee, um, if the select board chooses to appoint it. Um, and, you know, happy to take any questions that you have. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Um, questions or comments from members? Ms. Conlon?
I have a comment. I, I support the idea and I like, Tim, your proposal is very good. Your, I thought your memo was well put together. The comment that I have really relates to just the appointment of committees generally, and it's not specific just to this committee. You know, it's been a trend recently to be nominating a member of the CONCOM, a member of the park commissioners, the planning board, the select board, the historical commission. I, I think we need to keep in mind that that's putting a lot of people on, who's already served on a board on multiple committees because we've been doing this quite a number of times recently. And it really is not, but I think she's the preferred way of doing it. I think it's better to have, you know, people appointed from the community who have some particular expertise that might lend itself to the charge of the committee. And then have members of town government who have appropriate expertise be there to staff the committee. So, you know, I, I'm really kind of torn on it. I, I think it's, I understand why Tim selected these particular boards because they all somehow relate to the subject matter, but, and it does say designate. But my sense is if the select board is going to appoint a committee, it should be the select board appointing the full committee rather than five or six boards having a designate and um, that, that's just my general comment. And, and Tim, again, you're fairly new to this job, although you held similar position before. You're not new to the town, but you, you're still fairly new in the role. I, I don't want you to think I'm only directing this comment at your proposal. This is something that's come up a number of times in the last year or so. Where we've had committees where we're appointing select board members to multiple committees. I think each one of us is probably on four, five or six committees right now, which is not the way things used to operate. So we just need to be careful that we're not staffing committees with the same people all the time and people aren't getting overloaded with assignments. So that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wells? Oh, you're.
I'm doing it. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree with Katie a little bit. And I mean, I agree with her, but my, my main concern, and I appreciate, um, Tim's effort on this is we were in a time in history where we have never, that I can recall, faced as much work before us that's going to take time and effort, um, regarding affordable housing. I mean, we've got, am I correct? Five projects before, more than five? Uh, as, if you count them all, I think we're up around seven is what we're, between what we have and what's coming down the immediate pipeline. That's, they were two-person staff. That's just my own concern. I mean, I hear his point. And I, I just want to refer back, you might remember, Madam Chair, you and I toured a location in this town of parkland a year ago and, um, the people from mass housing, uh, at, my correct, Tim, it's referred to as 97 chap? Parkland is covered under master, is it chapter 97?
It's, yeah. Article 97.
Article 97. And then, and they looked at us and said, your chance of changing any parkland in this town to anything else is virtually is zero. Because you, and you could tell me if I'm wrong here, uh, for faultful discussion is if you take some parkland, you have to replace it with other parkland. And I just don't know where we would get that from. But, uh, so I, I appreciate the effort and the timing and to Katie's point about the committee, she's absolutely right. We're committed to death there. And not to say it's not warranted, but B, my bigger concern, but you ought to power it right now. And you must be feeling this because we failed it. We're not doing it every day. We're meeting every two weeks. Um, you've got to be feeling this every day. And, um, it's just the, the affordability is facing us right now. How much of the time that's going to take of your staff currently?
Thank you. Um, other members? Comments or questions? Mr. Zulis?
So, so, uh, maybe, um, uh, we could satisfy Katie's, uh, uh, concern and, and, and not Katie's concern, but the concern of, um, designating individuals. We could just make it a committee of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Uh, without designated, without designating that they should come from, um, other committees. And, uh, when the, uh, opportunity arises, we could do it, right? We don't need to, we don't need to, uh, we don't, we, we could always appoint someone from the conservation commission without it being required.
Right.
Um, so perhaps we just, um, uh, we just make it a committee of nine and, and we, and then we go forward to, to appoint it and, and, you know, and Tim will make recommendations and maybe those recommendations will turn out to be, you know, similar to what we have here. But, uh, but that will give us a little more flexibility, it seems.
Um, Mr. Doyle, before I speak, would you like to say anything?
I've, I've had two thoughts. Uh, one is I think what Mike has put on the table is very reasonable. Um, another one was that if there was a representative from the CPA committee on it, that's going to have an interface already with parks, with plenty of wood, conservation, historic, et cetera. So, um, that could be all enveloped within what Mike proposes. So I, I would endorse what Mr. Zulus has put on the table.
Um, so I, I, I have a couple of questions and what, what I was thinking of, uh, was that this is an excellent guide for the types of, um, members of the committee that we would want. And so we could reach out to, um, parks and say, you know, what, do you have a preference? Does one of you want to be on this? Or is there a former commissioner or someone you'd like to appoint or? You, you know, I think there are some creative ways that we could get these viewpoints, um, without, without necessarily naming that they have to be, that designated by these other committees or, you know, definitely pulled from, from the other committees. So I, I do like that idea. The other thing I was wondering about, um, Mr. Zerwinski is do, do you have a feel, um, for a timeline and a time commitment for people as we, as we seek to, to staff it? Um, it was a while ago that I worked on my portion, um, and I did the flora. Um, so, you know, I did a lot of that work on my own. We didn't use a consultant as you said, so I, I'm, I don't have a good handle on, on what the time commitment would be.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to lie. I, I don't have a, a, a great handle either. Um, and, and I, I think that's kind of part of, you know, the, 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 the reason that getting the committee together is the first step is because that committee then kind of figures out what its capacity and capabilities are.
Okay.
And that goes into the conversation around, do we feel that this is something that we can take on ourselves? There are minimum requirements that go into an open space plan. And then, you know, like a Christmas tree that you put ornaments on, you can, you know, lard it up with all sorts of other goodies. Um, so I, I, I think that's really kind of, um, you know, the, one, one of the first decisions that a committee would need to make is, you know, do we want to, figure out a way to do this ourselves? Or do we want to do, um, engage the services of a consultant, which, you know, still requires, you know, meeting time and, and, and volunteer labor on the parts of the committee, but a lot of the really technical work, um, you know, would be done by the consultant. Um, and so I think, um, you know, we can figure out a way to, to get some budget for that. Um, the planning board has expressed an interest in, in supporting this idea. Um, so that's definitely something that's on the table. Um, but I think, you know, forming the committee first, um, you know, getting folks that are interested in this project. And then having them kind of use that, you know, time to make that decision, um, to, to, um, to, to member Collins and, uh, Collins', uh, points about committees, I, I, you know, I hear you 100%. Um, and, and so I'm not, I'm, I'm not wedded to this way of doing things. Um, I think that the, the principle of having some type of representation from these boards and committees, whether it's literal or, or, or otherwise, I think is important. Um, but you know, how they get picked, who they are, um, is, is not, is not as important to me. Um, and so I think whatever makes it easier for folks to be able to participate in a way, um, that's, you know, a, a kind of full participation without, you know, feeling overloaded with other things. Um, you know, I, any port in a storm, whatever way, we, way we can get it done. Um, I'm, I'm happy to work with this board on, um, and, and figure that out.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so it, it sounds as if we're in general agreement that we would like to go forward, um, with, uh, um, with, with trying to, uh, staff this committee, uh, through a slightly alternative mechanism. Um, and uh, it sounds as if we would need to do a little advertising and maybe reaching out, uh, reaching out to people, but maybe, um, put something in the newspaper, put something out on social media, something up on the website. Um, uh, but at, at the same time, going to these various boards and committees and talking to them about, um, possible appointees. Um, so that we make sure we get these viewpoints in. Does that sound, is that what I'm hearing from people?
I think so. Uh, Madam Chair, would it make sense to approve the formation of the committee, you know, or maybe approve it in concept? And ask the town planner who's given this some thought already to draft a charge for us, maybe look at the composition and come up with a, a new proposal for us that would incorporate some of the comments tonight and, um, maybe start thinking about candidates for the committee and bring it up at a future meeting. Come back to it as with a charge and a proposed membership. Um, committee, would that make sense?
That makes sense to me. Mr. Doyle?
I was right where Katie is and to that effect, I had, um, made a minor modification of what I think is, um, it's not identified as a motion, but to form the open space and recreation plan committee. Town planner recommends that the select board, uh, uh, seek nominations, uh, make appointments, uh, for an eight-member committee. Get that started and then go to the charge and the following steps.
That sounded like a motion. Was it?
Consider it a motion made.
Thank you.
Thank you, second.
Uh, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? You muted. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Oh, Madam Chair, I vote no.
That's okay. You vote no?
I do.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Collins? Yes. So, um, so Mr. Zerwinski, just to be clear, uh, we're looking for, an updated, uh, charge and, uh, based on our feedback. Is there, do you have any questions or do you need any clarification?
Uh, I, I don't think so. Uh, this all makes sense to me. So I'll get to work on it.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that, thank you for taking the time to be with us. Okay. Um, item 13, an update slash discussion if we need it on the housing production plan and, um, uh, Allison Quinn is here to, uh, to talk to us, give us an update.
Good evening, uh, Madam Clerk and members, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
It's okay.
It's a little past my bedtime, uh, and members of the board. Um, I wanted to come tonight to kind of give you an update, uh, both on the housing production plan and similarly the outcome of the local emergency rental assistance program that we had offered. Which disappointingly, uh, we only were able to capture one person who qualified. Um, I have had some conversations back and forth with Metro Housing and I, I think there's a couple of ways to think about that. Because we're part of the consortium and that funding is generated through home. It's subject to the HAD guideline. So only people who are at 60% of AMI or below would be applicable for the LIRA program. And also people who do not currently get subsidies would have been applicable. So there were benefits as far as there was self-certification and it was fast-tracked. But at the same time, um, it only captured a very small part of Milton's population. And that's kind of the piece that fits in with the housing production plan. I spoke with, uh, Metro Housing today and after the December 31st deadline, they're going to report back all of the data to, to our department. So then we can kind of parse out what was controlled for as far as AMI, um, and who was receiving subsidies. So that we can better understand the landscape of the people in Milton who qualified for or didn't qualify for that type of program and why. Um, so that kind of brings me into our conversation about the housing production plan as we're trying to fill our affordable housing gap. The, the housing production plan, it, it serves as a, a guide, uh, that presents the roadmap to achieving the town's affordable housing goals. I've been working with Dania Raphael, who is this, on the select board housing committee. And we are putting together an educational webinar about the housing production plan. We hope that this will inform Milton residents on the importance of turning the recommendations of the housing production plan into an action plan. So we have been, uh, drafting this webinar and as we've been working through what we thought were the critical pieces to pull out. Uh, we've identified several recommendations from the housing production plan that are actually already in the town's pipeline. Um, first, the, the town meeting has already voted to adopt the Milton Village Mixed Use Plan Unit Development Overlay. Um, that's going to allow multifamily residential over commercial and it requires a 12% inclusionary zoning. The planning board has drafted a condo conversion bylaw aimed at preserving Milton's historically significant properties while allowing for multifamily residential that respects the character of the surrounding neighborhood, maintains suitable open space and also calls for inclusionary zoning. The planning board, uh, has also drafted an accessory dwelling unit bylaw to provide for independent living spaces within existing single-family homes. Um, that's going to create another alternate housing option for Milton residents. The town just passed the Community Preservation Act, which is a significant step towards achieving the town's affordable housing goals. And we have also just completed a comprehensive inventory of town-owned land that may be used down the road for affordable housing. Um, these are just a, a few of the steps the town has already taken towards implementation of the housing plan. And I, I think those are very positive steps. And I'm not even sure that we're all cognizant that this has been going on at the, at the same time. But I think it's important to think about the housing production plan as that catalyst to achieving all of the affordable housing goals that Milton needs, specifically getting to that 10%. Um, with all the 40Bs coming at us, it's, I think it's, you know, well timed to have all of this happening at once. So that's really where we're at for now. I, I hope to be able to give you more updates in the very near future as, as Dania and I complete our webinar and have it public facing.
Well, that's, oh, wonderful. I, I really appreciate your taking the time to, to update, uh, us and that you and Dania are, are, are working on that. Uh, Ms. Raphael is extremely talented as, as are you and, um, and so I, I, uh, I really look forward. This is the first time we've had somebody on the housing, um, committee who is, uh, an expert in communications. So, um, so we feel very fortunate.
She's very, very clever and she's been fantastic to work with.
Yeah. Well, that, that, that's wonderful because she's really new to the committee. And so, uh, it's, 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 uh, it's good that, uh, we have something, uh, that plays to her, her many strengths. Does anyone have, do any members have? Does anyone have, do any members have, um, questions or comments? Um, well, thank you, thank you again, and I, I really have to say, I appreciate your, your working so hard to put the local emergency, uh, rental assistance program together and, um, and the fact that you are finding useful ways. I mean, I'm so glad that one person was helped, but I think that we, we, we didn't, you know, that we expected more, uh, to be able to help more people. And so while that's a disappointment, um, the fact that it's going to, um, give us data that, that we can use and is illustrating how much we really need to move the housing production fin, plan forward, um, in a really timely fashion, I, I just appreciate your spirit of, of looking at that and, um, you know, as an opportunity.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to help, and do you want me to hang on until you guys get to the Community Preservation Committee, or do you, do you have that under wraps?
That, that, well, um, uh, I think that that might be useful as far as I, I'm concerned. Do, do, but do other members think that we can let Ms. Quinn go? Or would you like her to stay on? Do you think you might have questions? Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, would you want to move the agenda so that Allison could?
I, I was going to say, if you want her to stay, then we'll just move to that item, I think. Um, okay. Great. Um, thank you for, for offering. Okay, so we will now, um, go down to item 16, and, um, to go back to that. That's, uh, we're, we will, we won't talk about the date at the moment for, for the February town meeting, but, uh, but our Select Board article is the establishment of a community preservation committee, and I think everyone received an updated version of, of the, um, of the article that Ms. Quinn started for us. Um, Kevin Freitag, uh, put some finishing touches on it for us, which we really appreciate. And I know we also have a, um, I don't know, Allison, if you were, have, uh, had intended to talk about the next steps for the Community Preservation Act, and if you, if you have your slides, um.
I'm not sh, like, you know, I didn't prepare to.
Okay, yeah, I know that.
I'm sure I can find them.
I just wanted to make sure that you hadn't intended to go through that with us. Okay. Okay, great. Do, would you, would you like to walk us through, um, through the article?
Sure. I, I don't have it in front of me, but I, I feel that I've seen them enough to, to get, um, the, the basic gist of this down. So at, at the town meeting, whether it be the next one or, or whenever, um, it, you know, we go in February or whatever, the committee, um, will, that the Select Board will, you know, put forward the motion to have the town meeting vote to adopt the Community Preservation Committee. Five of those num, of those members need to be those that have already been highlighted through the state legislation. So that would be someone from the Historic Commission, someone from the Planning, um, Department, I'm sorry, someone from the Planning Board, rather, uh, someone from Conservation Commission, someone from the Parks, uh, the Board of Parks Commissioner, and I'm forgetting the fifth one, I'm sorry. It's a little late for me.
The Housing Authority.
The Housing Authority, correct. So most of the, the, the Community Preservation Committees that I've seen tend to have higher number, because you can't have up to nine. Um, I know that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go, go ahead.
I, I think, I think having the flexibility for those last four at large, um, allows you to change, uh, the dynamic of the committee as you see fit. For example, you, you may have an abundance of historic preservation applications, uh, in the very beginning. Um, so you may want to have a, another person who may be able to evaluate a historic preservation application. Um, and then, you, you know, those three-year terms, or however, however you want to frame tho, those terms, you may see an influx of open space down the road, and you might want to, you know, change it, uh, in, in a way where, you know, you have some park advocates on, on your board. Um, so that was really my thinking of, of leaving those four last seats up to the discretion of the Select Board, but beyond the state requirement, I believe that you have the flexibility to have, you know, up to nine members and, and four, which can be at-large that you can appoint.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Um, and Mr. Freitag has joined us. Uh, welcome. And, um, Mr. Freitag, uh, are there, are there things that we should be, um, drawing our, our attention to in particular with the article?
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, Kevin Freitag, Town Council. Um, the, the draft article pretty much tracks the statute that creates and references the, um, Community Preservation Committee. So, and it also tracks this, the vote of town meeting, because as you know, town meeting could have done some different things in terms of what sections of the statute it wanted to sort of apply that would be, um, you know, possibility for use of some of the funds that could be collected under the program. Um, so those parts are rather set. Really where the Select Board has an opportunity here to make some changes is in the third paragraph of that first section, uh, which I think Allison Quinn was just referencing, um, in terms of the at-large members, the number of at-large members, the terms that they will serve, and who will be the appointing authority. So that's really where the, the board, I would suggest, has the most disre, discretion in terms of crafting this article, uh, for the bylaw. Other than that, again, it pretty much tracks what's in the statute. I think it all needs to be there. There are some different versions of this that I have seen, um, but they all, at the end of the day, get to the same place, which is to track the statute, and then whatever the local municipality has adopted, and then give some flexibility, uh, in terms of those open or at-large seats.
Thank you. Do members have comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. Wells? So I think, so I think we're, we're, we're just about there, uh, on this, but I think, um, there are a few tweaks that we could make. Um, uh, we, we had, um, we've seen, I've seen some templates where it provides for, what if there's a vacancy in one of the, in one of the openings? What do you do in that circumstance? What if one of those commissions is no longer in existence? What do you do in that circumstance? So there's a few things that I think we can do, um, to tweak this. Uh, I think the general direction is there and it covers it all, but I, but there are a couple of tweaks that I think we could make. So, so I, you know, I, I, I'd like to, uh, uh, approve this, but with the opportunity to make a few, uh, to make a few, uh, a few revisions, um, uh, uh, before we finalize it.
Um, and I, I actually, uh, would like to, uh, to mention that the, at the, um, Affordable Housing Trust meeting, uh, and, and, uh, joint meeting with the Housing Committee, the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, expressed an interest in actually having a seat as well. The Housing Authority ha, has a seat, but the Housing Authority's work is a bit different than the Affordable Housing Trusts. So, um, funds could be used for, um, both of those. Um, and, uh, and so I, I would like us to consider setting aside, um, a seat for, for that. And, um, I don't know why, I thought your second point, Mr. Zulus, I, 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 I don't know why I thought I, I, I saw it in here, but I may have just seen it in one of those other templates and thought it was here. Um, but, um.
Madam Chair, is it in the last paragraph of, uh, second, well, section one, third paragraph, the last sentence? Does that address your point, Mr. Zulus?
Right. There it is. Thank you.
That, that addresses part of it, but, uh, it doesn't address, I don't, it doesn't d, address directly if there's a vacancy.
Okay. Right. No, it doesn't, there's nothing about a vacancy in here.
So I, so it, so that's one piece that we just want to supplement.
Um.
I, I mean, I, but I think directionally, we've got it covered. I just think just a couple of things we just want to make sure are in there. And I haven't had, and I didn't go through and match it up against everything, everything else, just noticed a couple of things.
Okay. So, um, so, uh, I, 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 I guess I kind of would like a sense from, uh, the board. Uh, we could approve it, uh, subject to some modifications, but the modification that I just presented, I feel is a bit different than, um, a, and, uh, and I'm just wondering, uh, about, um, the board's thoughts on that. Or if maybe we need a little time to think about it, um, and come back when we look at the modifications. Mr. Doyle? Oh.
Uh, two thoughts, Madam Chair. Uh, the first, if we pass this, I would like to suggest that, uh, it'd be passed with minor modifications on the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, that could be one of the four positions appointed by the Select Board, so that we would not have to incorporate, um, that wording at this time as a substantive change, if that would be agreeable to you and the other members of the board.
It, it is, to me, I guess my concern is, um, something that is accustomed with one board may fall by the wayside with subsequent boards, um, and that's just something to think about, but I, I, I think that the Affordable Housing Trust, trustees would be, um, happy to have the seat, no matter how it, they come by it. Um, especially in the beginning, as we're, as we're getting off to this, this really auspicious start. Very exciting. Um, so, thank you. Ms. Conlon?
I'd be fine with modifying it for that purpose, or, you know, this is only the article. It could always go into the recommendation of the warrant committee, so.
Right, right.
Assuming it's within the scope, like, I mean, Kevin can tell us whether he thinks that there's a scope problem there, but it doesn't seem like there'd be a big problem there.
Okay. Wait, he just said no. Um.
No, I don't. I don't think so. The, whatever we do here is going to be under the provisions of the general laws that create it. So, and that's what's referenced in the article. So as long as we're under that umbrella, we can amend, or the recommendation for the warrant committee can be changed as much as we like, so much as it's, it falls under that, that section of the law.
Okay. Wonderful. Well, then I, I, I think that we should pass it with the minor modifications. Thank you.
So, so I'll move to accept the, um, the, um, Establishment of Community Preservation Committee, uh, article, uh, subject to minor modifications. Move to, to accept that article into the warrant for the February, uh, unknown date special town meeting, February 2021.
Thank you. We have a second. Um, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Doyle? You're muted. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Collins, yes, excellent. Um, and thank you so much, uh, Ms. Quinn, and I appreciate your, your being here for this. And, um, Mr. Freitag, I know you're going to be with us for a little while, but thank you for top, speaking to this. Um.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, you too. Um. Okay, so, um, actually, we do have Allison and Tim here. I, I was just realizing. Would, would the members like to, to discuss, um, any of the, the other articles? Um, or are, do you have questions or comments, or would we like to just, um, talk about the date?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells?
It's 10:25. In light of Mr. Zulus, I'd like, can we put these off maybe till Monday's discussion and come back to these? I already, I watch if it's, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Katie, that's just my suggestion, because we are.
I, I agree with you, Richard, that it's getting late. My, my suggestion was going to be, this is just a matter of including them in the warrant, and these are the planning boards.
Okay, okay, okay.
We can discuss them at a later time.
Right.
But I don't think we should discuss them tonight. I think we should just go ahead and include them if.
I'll make a motion to include them in a warrant.
Second.
Okay, but, but wait, wait. We're, I think we first need to, uh, we've, uh, we're a little bit odd more. We have, we've skipped over the 40B letters, and we haven't even gotten to close, opening and closing the warrant or anything yet.
All right, let me go back.
Right. I, I, I just wanted to make sure no one had a question or, or something on the articles for Tim or, or Allison before we let them go, and then we'll.
You're right.
We'll go backwards.
Do we need Tim, though, for the 40B letters? I think we could let Allison go.
We do need Tim for, for the 40B letters, so, um, so.
So, Katie, you refer in the article 15, uh, item 15, those.
14 and 15.
14 and 14 and 15, yeah.
Right. Um, right, we're on 14. Thank you. Okay. So let, let's move backwards for a moment, and, um.
I'll make a motion on 14, Madam Chair, if, if no one else, if everyone's ready. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion, um, to approve the comment letter to Mass Housing for the proposed Chapter 40B Development, 936 Prusha Road.
Um, do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
Thank you. Um, any discussion?
I, I have one question for Tim. Uh, Tim, did, were these, um, did Judy Barrett review these, or do you have an opportunity to review them?
Uh, n, no, she didn't. She's not under contract with us for, for that, for that work.
Okay, I thought we were going to, all right.
I thought she was.
Yeah, I thought we were going to have her at least review them or be available to review them. The only reason I bring that up is because we, we had her weigh in on some of the others, and just for the sake of, um, treating all of these applications the same way, I thought we were going to at least give her an opportunity to review them, if not do the initial draft. The plan was for, for Tim Zerwinski to do the initial draft, but I thought we were giving Judy Barrett an opportunity to review them, but I think they're good letters, so, you know, given the timing, perhaps we don't need to do that, but.
You know what, Katie? Um, oh, I, you know, I, I think just to follow up, I think Judy said this to us. I think in one of our meetings, when either you or Michael's, someone brought up to her, should, and I think her response to us was, she felt that the planning staff would be more than capable, and, and appears they have, and, and. So I don't think she did. Even, I, I'm with you. I recall the discussion, but I think she referred it back to them.
Well, I, I think they're more than capable. I just was wondering if she had reviewed them. That was all. It was just a fact. Okay.
Any, any other questions or comments? No. Okay. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
What do you think? Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Don't you vote no once in a while?
Yes.
Shake things up a little bit.
Item 14, uh, which is 16 A-Mor Road.
I'll move to approve and issue the comment letter to Mass Housing as amended for the proposed Chapter 40B Development at 16 A-Mor Road.
I, I'll second it for the discussion, but I have a question for the town planner.
Yep.
On page, I think there's just an error in, on page four.
Oh.
Under application errors and other concerns, just the first bullet point. I think we should take out, this site is nowhere near Blue Hill Avenue.
Oh.
It just started with, you started, just take that out, in the word "and," and just start with, "the urban edge of Boston is located over a mile away."
Right.
Because the site, A-Mor intersects Blue Hill Ave, so, um, it's, this particular end of A-Mor is, is, um, you know, i, it's seven or eight houses away, but still, I think we should take that clause out and just make it the sentence that starts with "the urban edge of Boston." That was all.
I, I don't know. I thought that was taken out. Um, okay. Thank you. All those in favor, um, uh, uh, with the modification, um, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Collins, yes. Excellent. Thank you. That'll be our record for this evening. Um, okay.
Uh, Chair, Chair Collins, do you need me to stick around for any zoning article conversation?
I think that, I think we established that we're not discussing these this evening, so, thank you.
Tim, thank you very much for all of your work on the project eligibility letters. I thought they were very good.
Yeah, no, I, I, they, uh.
I, 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 I stood on the shoulder of giants, uh, kind of cribbing from the previous letters, so, um, uh, th, thanks, thanks for taking the time, um, and have a great night.
Thank you. Um, you too. Okay. Um. Okay, um, all right, back to uh, special town meeting. So, um, I've, I've uh, had a lot of discussions this week, including several today, about um, the um, readiness of some of the articles before us. In talking to April Anderson, so the condominium conversion bylaw um is, the, the first hearing won't be until the twenty-first. And that was supposed to be the warrant committee's sort of last day of meeting, so April, April herself would be at the warrant committee while the hearing is taking place. Um, there are usually some changes after a, a public hearing, and it's not it, it's not clear that they really would feel comfortable um, putting it forward. And um, and they also have the accessory dwelling unit bylaw um, to, to do a little more um, public work on. So, between that and fire stations, I, I actually thought I would um be a little proactive, and I called George Asher this evening before our meeting to check in with him about how moving it to, say, the twenty-second, because the fifteenth is President's Day uh, would work if the Fire Station Building Committee is ready at all for February. And he said that that would work quite well for the warrant committee um, because of how they've structured their time to have uh, departmental budgets looked at um, in their meeting schedule. And um, so he, he said that that they could certainly accommodate that. The question is whether this board feels that um, we should have a meeting, and um, and would we like to keep, try to keep the original date, or would we like a different date?
Well, it appears that everybody wants a little more time on this.
I, 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 I like your, your proactiveness there, Madam Chair, and I'm with Michael, I think some more time. I think they're very close here, and I think that when they get here before us and, and the committee presents, you know, their, their analysis and their work, and how they got to where they are. Um, I think in the end, this, have a positive outcome, and I hear Mike's thoughts, too. I often think about now, should you just go, I've said this to both Brian and Dan, should you just go forward with two instead of three, and the more I think about it, the more I think that it will get lost and never get done, so. Um, was, they're very close, so I think, to Michael's point, I think a couple of weeks could do it.
Yeah.
And give us some time to, and I'm sorry, and give us some time to, to allow them to present to us and digest what they.
And, and Richard, just to be clear, I, I'd, I'd be happy to go through, go, go with three if, if the last one's fake, but at some point, we gotta light the candle and.
I agree, I know, I've thought about it, I agree, I agree.
Right, um, Ms. Conlon?
I, on the time issue, I'm a little surprised, actually, to hear the warrant committee say that they think late February is better for them, because quite frankly, it was always a big issue to avoid mid to late February for warrant committees in the past. Warrant committee's role has changed a little bit, because there's now a lot of budget being presented, the budget's really being presented to them, and they're not kind of doing it all on their own um, anymore, which is a good thing, but um, you know, the later you push this out, there's not much of a difference between, you know, late February, early March versus May. At, at some, at some point, you get to a point where, does it really make sense to spend the money on an additional town meeting? If we're that close to May. So I guess we really need, the fire building project is what's driving this. I think we really need to get to pin down whether that committee is going to be ready to go by February twenty-second. You know, that's already pretty late. If then they're looking at an April election to go.
Yeah, I agree with you.
You only get two months. So, are, are they better off thinking about, you know, and again, I, I want to be careful with the recusal issue, but right now, we're talking about timing of a special town meeting. Are you better off looking at a separate referendum in June versus April? I think those are things that the Fire Building Committee is really going to have to take a hard look at over the next week or two.
I did bring up the, I did bring up a second referendum, i- instead of, if you're referring to having a second vote, like almost like an override vote on its own in June? Katie?
Yes, and, and have the town meeting way in in May, rather than.
I brought that up, I did bring that up. I, I, I would say we're gonna have a good idea within seven days.
Okay, well, um, I, 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 I agree that this hinges on the Fire Station Building Committee. But the, the Planning Board article for the condo conversion bylaw also um, plays into uh, you know, forty B uh, strategy possibly. Um, and so there if, if the stars align, that could be very useful, given that um, you know, the cork's kind of been pulled out of the bathtub. And we're, 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 we have to start the hearings, um, but, which um, so, so that, that is, that is something, but uh, but I, I do agree. We just have to see where they really are, and it really may make more sense. Um, I don't think February first makes a difference, uh, I mean, or makes any, any kind of sense at this point, and that's why I was saying, do you know, we, we do have a choice to not have a February town meeting at all, and just tell everyone, you know, it doesn't make sense, and we need to wait for May. So, um, but it sounds as if people would like to wait and to make that call after the next two weeks, when we meet with the Fire Station Building Committee.
I, I think so, but procedurally, I have a question, and this might be for Kevin. Um, I, I think we've advertised the warrant closing date in the newspaper, right, as, as today, for the February town meeting? So, I, I would think we would still want to close the warrant to the articles. And maybe then it's just a matter of postponing the town meeting at the, maybe Friday night, or maybe at the next meeting on the sixteenth.
Right, so I did, I did go and use Hillary's handy dandy calculator um, for the timeline, and actually we had pushed out closing the warrant. Um, so today would actually be the day if we held the meeting on the twenty-second. Um, but I, 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 but, but still, it doesn't really answer the question of us moving the, the meeting out. Um, but, but that, that date wouldn't change.
I, but I guess, I think my question more is, we've advertised, I think that you had in the newspaper must have referenced a February first town meeting. So the, if we close the warrant tonight, we could then, we don't need to go and notice another period, I don't think. I think we just, then we're just talking about rescheduling from February first to a date later in February, the town meeting. So that we keep the warrant closed to the articles that we have. If, if there's a new version of the fire article, we'll just substitute it in, but the article, it's we've got the topic, we've got the draft of the article.
Right.
That's in as of today. I just want to be sure I'm, that that's the right understanding here.
I agree with that, that's, I, I understand what your strategies, what you're thinking here.
Right.
By keeping it closed, oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
I think um, Katie has it right. I, I think that you're advertising the close of the warrant is separate and apart from when the town meeting will actually occur, so I think you can do both here.
Okay, great. Good, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
So, so that means we're gonna close, we're gonna close the, the, the warrant. We're gonna accept all of the articles that we have.
Mm-hmm.
A Community Preservation Act, three zoning articles, and Fire Building Committee, and close the warrant. Is that, is that what we're gonna do?
A motion?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to close the warrant. Um, do you want me to list, do you want me to list those, or do you want me to just cite the articles that Mr. Zulus?
That, that will work.
Okay. I'm using your language, Michael, what you said.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Capital yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes, so, so, so we accepted uh, uh, the one, two, one, two, three, four, five articles, and we closed the warrant?
Exactly.
All right, great.
Yeah, yes, yeah, I, I actually had emailed Kevin to see if that was okay, so thank you for bringing that up. Katie, um, because I, I didn't start with that. Great, so here we are, um. Okay, I'm just sorry, I'm just looking at what was underneath this. Got it. Okay, so now we're on to number seventeen, and this will, uh, the, the date will go on to our um, December sixteenth meeting. Thanks, everyone. Um, so I, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on seventeen, um, it's really discussion of renewal license conditions and, um, and the parity percentage of alcoholic beverages uh, to food sales for established, for the other establishments, Novara, Abbey Park, Steel and Rye, with Madre Osteria, because um, at the next meeting, we're going to be renewing uh, common vics and liquor licenses, and um, and those are on track. I did check with Jennifer. And um, I just wanted to be clear, because we did note, um, when we uh, did the Madre Osteria license, that we would need to create parity, and I just wanted to follow up on that, make sure everybody is on board. Um, and then, uh, actually, this kind of goes along with eighteen, but uh, but does anybody have um, have any comments or questions on that? I, I just want to make sure that if there is anything, we address it before we get to the sixteenth, because that's our opportunity to do these renewals.
It's just a matter of changing the percentage from twenty-five percent to forty percent in, in the others, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Wells? Oh, now you muted yourself.
I did, sorry. So my only concern is, and I, I articulate that, I don't spend a lot of time on it, on the forty percent. You saw the way in from both Novara and um, Steel and Ryan, their concerns on this. Are we going to, are we going to address this for twenty twenty-one?
Well.
I can live with it now, but can we address this for twenty twenty-one?
Well, I, I, I think it, I think it bears some discussion. I, I actually spent the weekend reading through other towns um, liquor license regulations, um, and uh, just to, just to get a better, sort of a feel for what's going on in other places. I know we're Milton, and we're not other towns, but it, it's, it's good to see, um, because I am the one who brought up the belts and suspenders thing, you know, after you, you um, talked about it from the, your public safety perspective, um, and I did have a talk with Chief King, but I, I, I was um hoping that uh, the board would um, appreciate having the policy committee um, do a, a review of our regulations, and maybe making some um, some recommendations for um.
I can go along with that. I can, I can live with that.
If that, if, if people would like that.
So, I'm not clear on what the policy committee would be looking at.
Well, um, creating a standardized, uh, you know, to update our regulations that, that we do have, and um, and to look at um, things like that question of um, having a percentage or not having a percentage, or are there other things we might want to, what, what might we want to update the regulations in, in any other way?
And to, to that point, Madam Chair, in, in the one discussion I had with Dave Dooley, and we don't have to talk about where my expertise comes from this, he, he, he understood that. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, and, and I even appreciate the fact that Mr. Zulus picked forty percent, and I had a long talk with Vance the other day about this. They've definitely emerged into something that is truly mind-dying, and to force them into just and I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna play, but I, I'll vote on this tonight, but I, I think I'm, I can even live with that. As long as we're gonna look at this strategically going, I just don't like making decisions on something that isn't really the um, reality, if you might want to say. And the fact that they have concerns about it, that's the part that truly bothers me the most.
Thank you. Ms. Conlon?
I, I think if there are concerns by the restaurant owners, then they need to make that known to the board, because I, I have not heard. Well, I have not heard it, Richard. Um, you know, when we, we went, we, we met with Madre Osteria, they were in agreement with forty percent, and one thing that I asked at that meeting was that we follow up with the other restaurants and find out what the right percentage would be before we even decide for Madre Osteria. We decided to go with forty percent for them. Presumably that works for the others, but we need to check that and be sure that it does, and I don't know if anyone has reached out to them.
Right, well, we got feedback from two owners who said that uh.
Did.
Didn't really make.
They were very strong. I don't know if you read them, Katie, but both of them wrote back to Michael's office.
I don't recall seeing anything about it.
They're, they're part of the notes. But I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that you, you get the, um, but, but anyway, I, I didn't mean for us to have a.
But part of the notes for the agenda notes?
Yes. Feedback from owners, but, but I.
All right, I have a printed, I mean, I printed this a couple of days ago, if it's been updated since, it's not on the copy that I have.
Maybe it's been updated, okay.
Right. I, I think it would be helpful if we, you know, I mean, once the agenda notes come out, they're, they're set, as far as I'm concerned, and you know, that's always been the way it's been. If we're gonna keep updating and adding things, it's not very helpful if you're working on a printed copy, so then I'm not aware of the restaurant owners until I read that, having, having an issue, but um, if, if the policy committee wants to take a look at the liquor license regulations, I guess I'm okay with that. I, I just want to urge that people not forget the history here. Abbey Park and Novara are in residential neighborhoods, as well as in a business district, and there was an awful lot of public input when those restaurants went in, and when they were permitted, and when they were licensed. And for just a few years later, it's all of a sudden to say, well, we're gonna rewrite the regulations. There's gonna need to be some public input, I think, into this, and.
Katie, we wrote, we wrote, I don't want to argue this, and I'm the one who did the investigation on this. I spent yeoman's hours on this. I'm the one who was so concerned, who agreed with all this. I've, there is A, no re, we've, we've got zero complaints. B, I mean, it's just like, but the reality of it is, with everyone forced it, with like, and, and I, I, as I say, I appreciate Michael coming up with forty, but even the forties, like, it was more of a strategic move to try and move the issue forward than a than a, okay, let's, oh, just, that's all, I, I'm like.
Richard, I, I respect that, but there were also a lot of public hearings before the planning.
I was there, I was the police chief, I was there.
Well, I, I was there for Novara, and I was there for some of the others, too, in different capacities, and there, a lot of neighbors weighed in on these issues, so we should, we just need to keep that in mind and not throw all of that out. I mean, if we're gonna make a change, we need to have a reason to make a change, and and we want to give the public some input.
Right, well, I, I think public input is always a good thing, and um, and I'm not suggesting anything drastic, I'm suggesting that we take a look and see what's changed, um, and what we can improve, um, uh, and, and what really makes sense. Uh, Mr. Doyle?
Listen, do we not now have a disparity in that we have food forty percent for one of the entities?
Huge disparity. The policy we don't enforce.
That, that's what we talked about first. We're gonna create parity, that's what's going into all the renewals.
So, so what I, I would like to suggest is uh, that, is to ask is, would it be possible for us to make forty percent at par for all of, all of them?
That's what we're doing.
Now.
Yeah.
And then have the policy committee to decide whether or not there should be anything beyond that, or any other matters, just make them two-step process very clear.
Right, that's what, that's what we were proposing.
I'm with you.
Yes, exactly. I mean, if, if that's a mental, if nobody, if people don't want to look at it, um, that's, that's fine, I just. Um.
I thought their letters were very compelling.
They were, they were very compelling.
Mr. Zulus?
And, and, and I don't want to get in the middle of anything, um, but um, uh, I, I just want to say, I'm not wedded to the forty percent. The forty percent was something that Mr. O'Donnell said he could accept, but if the other restaurants, if the other restaurants say that there's a percentage that's more realistic, given their businesses, uh, then um, then, then that makes, that makes sense. So maybe, maybe the, the way to do it is to to do forty now, or whatever, maybe we'll hear something from the restaurants before that about something that's more realistic, and then have the policy committee look at it and update it, as, as Arthur suggested.
Yeah. Um, okay.
I can live with that.
All right, um, okay.
Meantime, could we, could we please get the letters from those restaurants circulated, and, and you know, this goes to a larger point, which is material coming in after the agenda notes get circulated, and I've brought this issue up ad nauseam for the last two years since we instituted the OneDrive. The secure agenda was a much better format, and we need to have the materials the Friday before a meeting, so that's all I'm gonna say on this point, but just constantly be updating the OneDrive, and members having to go back and look at random times to see what's been uploaded. constantly be updating the OneDrive and members having to go back and look at random times to see what's been uploaded does not make a lot of sense and frankly is a disservice to the board.
Um, thank you, I, I, I'm, I will try to make sure we, we, uh, do that and, or that we defer things that really aren't, um, aren't ready for everyone. Um, I, I realize it is difficult to try to keep up with all of this, I've had difficulty this week, um, myself, um.
I'm not directing that specifically, Melinda, I, I just think that's, we have to put a system in place where that's how we operate. I mean, mo, most boards, most other boards get meeting materials in a package one time, a week or so before a meeting. We're seeing things flying in last minute all the time, and we just, you know, every now and then it becomes out of control and we have to rein it back in, and I think we're at another stage where we have to say, we need everything several days before the meeting.
Right.
So, thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, nineteen, we are on to our fire department, um, collective bargaining agreement, our, our MOU, and I feel terrible, Chief Madden has been waiting all this time, um, for, for this, Mr. Dennehy, would you like to lead us off, and Hillary, could you promote Chief Madden? Thank you.
Sure, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board. Um, I'm here tonight to present to, uh, to this board, uh, for approval, memorandum of agreement to the collective bargaining, um, agreement, um, with the Milton Firefighters Local 1116. Uh, this memorandum of agreement would, uh, run through July first of two thousand nineteen, uh, through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Uh, we met, uh, myself, Paige Appolito, very nice to have, uh, Chief Madden on our side of the table. Some of the items we, we, we highlighted during the eight, uh, bargaining sessions, uh, it was a very, uh, vibrant discussion. I think the, the, the town, uh, made its, its point to the Milton firefighters, how appreciated they are and, and all the work they do as first responders. Um, we, we listened to the concerns that the local union has, and I think, uh, it was a very, very productive back and forth session. So I'll just go through some of the highlights of, of those eight bargaining sessions. We, we, uh, we, uh, agreed upon a, a COLA, for first year of, of the, the contract, which would be fiscal year twenty, a two percent COLA, uh, fiscal year twenty-one, a one and a half percent COLA, and a similar one and a half percent COLA in fiscal year twenty-two, the third year of the contract. We, uh, agreed in principle on a one percent, uh, increase on the ten-year step for those firefighters in the unit that qualify, and that would come in the first year of the contract. Additionally, uh, a second one percent, um, step raise on the ten-year, um, for those in the unit that qualify in the second year of the contract. I will say, um, I learned very quickly during, uh, Chief Madden's early tenure, um, about his advocacy for firefighter training and certifications, clearly to make the Milton Fire Department as well-trained, as skilled as possible, so a lot of the stuff that, that we presented to the union, um, and they, they accepted, um, was that, and, and I'll, I'll list a couple of them. Going forward, all, all members of the bargaining unit hired after this coming January first, um, must successfully complete the Fire, Massachusetts Firefighter Academy's Career Repro, Recruit Program with firefighter one and two certifications, as well as their hazmat operations level responder training. Um, they must also be licensed, uh, to the national and Massachusetts level of emergency medical-based, um, standard within one year of employment, and, uh, Fallon Ambulance, Fallon Transmurmative, who provides emergency, uh, care services for the town, uh, will attend an appropriate medical, uh, emergency medical technician program to any of those. These must be retained, um, for the, for the remainder of their career, so. Again, uh, want to thank Chief Madden for, for being able to jump across the table, understandably. Um, before July, he, he, he was in this union, um, it's pretty hard to jump across the table, but I think, um, the, the local, uh, appreciates his concern for, uh, certification and, and further training, um, by each of, uh, each of his staff members, uh, and, and I, I certainly appreciate it, we're, we're looking to have the best uh, and most skilled and trained, uh, fire department, uh, that we can have, so. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll take any questions or.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, if you're ready, to give out discussion. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the Milton Fire Department Collective Bargaining Agreement, memorandum agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, any comments or questions?
Let's let the chief go to bed. Or he has a fire.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, so thank you, Chief.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank, thank, thank you to the chief, thank you to the union, and thank you to Mr. Dennehy, and Paige Appolito as well.
Ms. Collins, yes, and, um, and I, I agree, thank you to everybody who worked on this, um, and, and came together, uh, to, to get this done.
Thank you, and, and that is the last, uh, union contract to be negotiated on the town side.
Right.
When do you start again?
Tomorrow. No.
Take tomorrow, you can, you can tomorrow.
Oh, and, again, I, I, I just want to hammer home the point that it was, it's, it's a, it's a great group of men and women that we have in our town, uh, providing this very necessary, uh, public safety twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and, uh, we've got a great chief, we, we, he had big, very big shoes to fill. I love the fact that he's, uh, so concentrated on training and, and certification, so, um, appreciate that, and, uh, thank you to Local 1116.
Thank you.
Seven o'clock, you better keep this moving, Madam Chair.
I know, okay, so, uh, we're actually, oh gosh, wait a minute, I'm on the wrong page, um.
That's back, no.
Item twenty.
Right, item twenty, here we are, um, consideration approval of an amendment, uh, to a contract between the Town of Milton and Ra, I don't know how to say it, Ra House, uh, Friedenfeld and Associates, related to the construction of the animal shelter. Uh, we, we just received this, did members have a chance to sufficiently review it? No?
I was at work all day, so no.
Yeah, I, I, it, because it just came in, so, um, would people like to ask a question, or, or of Mr. Freitag, or shall we just move this to Monday? Or our next meeting, uh, the sixteenth?
Yeah, if there's no downside to deferring it, uh, that's what I'd like to do.
Right, I, I asked Mr., well, I asked Mr. Dennehy earlier if.
Could we do it Monday, preferably, so we can get this, this ball rolling, that everyone's been anxiously awaiting, um, that this, uh, animal shelter breaking ground.
Thank you.
You'll definitely make one person in this town very happy, if you get this ball rolling.
Yeah, I'd feel better if it's Monday too, okay, great, so we'll move that to Monday, thank you, everyone, um. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Freitag, for working on that. And, um, so twenty-one, um, approval acceptance of donations to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, um, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
I'll move we accept. Go ahead, Katie. We accept the following donations to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, in memory of Milton resident Julianne Scott, one hundred dollars from Jean Capone McCabe, twenty-five dollars from Janice Tully, and fifty dollars from Kathleen Convoy.
Second, um, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes, and, um, just want to thank those residents for, um, or, they're not residents, for, uh, for everyone who, who donated and Julianne Scott's name, and, uh, our sympathies with her family. Twenty-two, Senior Tax Work Off Program, um, Mr. Dennehy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, so at, at the last meeting, we had it on for a discussion. Uh, we were talking about the calendar year twenty twenty-one Senior Tax Work Off Program, we talked about the success of the, the twenty twenty program, uh, given our COVID circumstances, doesn't look like we're gonna, um, be getting out of that same COVID, um, circumstances, uh, in twenty twenty, but we're working our way through, uh, solution to work through this program, so. Um, there was a question asked if we could in, increase the threshold of that fifteen hundred dollars. Unfortunately, that, that is the limit, uh, statutorily. Uh, we did look into it, and I appreciate Town Council and, uh, uh, Chief, Chief Appraiser Bob Bushway taking a look at that. Uh, but the Town of Milton and, and this board, two years ago, actually brought, uh, the program to, to its maximum height, so I'm here tonight, uh, to seek, uh, approval of this board to go forward with the calendar year twenty twenty-one Senior Tax Work Off Program.
And Michael, it's on the tip of your tongue, read it.
I'll move, I'll move to approve the, uh, calendar year twenty twenty-one Senior, uh, Tax Work Off Program as presented.
Second.
Do all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, such a great program, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you.
Um, so, twenty-three, approval of meeting minutes, I, I honestly have, didn't have time to, to review these very well, um. It, would it be all right if we deferred these, how to?
Go to Chair, whatever you want to do, Madam Chair, do it. It better be to five o'clock on Monday. Who's doing that?
Um, so future meeting dates, so we have the seventh, um, and then we have the sixteenth for this month. And, um, January, we're looking at, um, Mr. Dennehy, we're, we, we, we now must stick with the second and fourth, is that right?
That's correct, yeah, uh, zoning Board of Appeals is gonna take all Tuesdays, first and third Wednesdays, and first and third Thursdays.
Got it, so we are on for the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh of January.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have to move our meetings because of this?
No, we just don't have the option to really jump around, so.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Day with, yeah, because they, they need, they need as many days as they can get to get through all these hearings. So, because of the Zoom platform, and, uh, being able to, uh, be televised on, um, cable access. Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, believe it or not, uh, nothing much to report. There's been, been a lot tonight, so I'll, I'll, I will, I'll talk to everyone on Monday.
Okay, that sounds wonderful, um, okay, um, the chair has no report, members' reports.
I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle?
No report, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wells?
I just want to say one thing tonight, Madam, as, as we're all here, working so diligently tonight, a very coveted, longtime town public servant had their final meeting as a representative of the town, tonight was Colin Pavlichek's final meeting for the school committee, and, uh, I sent him a text from all of us that I hope he is sitting home having a fine sip of something of all of his years of well-deserved service from town meeting member to the Warren Committee, to the School Committee, to in his final position as the Assistant Superintendent for Business. As I've said many times, um, he's not a person I ever expected to develop a friendship with, but that has become a husband. He is one unique and talented individual, and has done some great service to the town of Milton.
Absolutely.
They said to just, well, Tim, all the best, Glenn, enjoy.
Sweet, thank, thank you, yep, gotta bake him something this weekend.
I second all of that, uh, Richard. Glenn was a wonderful mentor to anyone who followed him on the Warren Committee, and he certainly made a lot of contributions to Milton, so I, um, I'm very grateful to have had an opportunity to learn from him.
He's much like Mr. Cronin, a little bit younger, but in a similar way.
Very, very lucky, um, to have served while he was with us. Mr. Zulis?
I do want to address one thing very briefly, uh, that, uh, has come up, um, and couldn't be anticipated, uh, prior to the agenda being set, uh, because it was, uh, related to some media reports. There were some media reports about a disconnect on the airplane traffic issue between Milton and Quincy, and I just want to, um, I just want to clarify a few things from, um, from the Milton, uh, uh, side of things, uh, and that is, um, you know, as we all know, about seven years ago, um, there was a superhighway in the sky, an ARNEV, that was created as, as was created by the FAA in many, many neighborhoods around the country. The FAA created the superhighway in the sky, which, uh, which bombard, bombarded and continues to bombard, um, uh, some neighborhoods in Milton. Uh, we've been at this for several, several years, and after several years of study, MIT, which is working for Massport, the FAA, determined that there were three potentially flyable alternatives to help those neighborhoods and to help alleviate some of the bombardment that, uh, that they were facing, uh, because of the runway for our, our NAV. Uh, now this board, as we all know, um, just about a month ago, voted to pursue all three of those options to see if it could, uh, to see if any of them could work. Um, now the next step in that process, and the next step in this, in the Massport FAA process, as has been, uh, engaged in in other communities, is for Milton to reach out to our neighboring communities, to Quincy and to Braintree and to Hingham, about these three potentially flyable alternatives as designated by the FAA and Massport's consultant, and that's what we intend to do, so, uh, so that's really where we are, and that's what this board has done, so I just wanted to provide that clarification, because it, uh, it seems like, uh, something was lost in translation there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment response, we, we don't need that, um. Future agenda items, I, I think that we're pretty well set, um, unless somebody has something that we haven't been talking about. Yeah, okay, um. So, um, at this time, I move pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two F, to enter into, um, executive session to approve, um, executive session meeting minutes. And also, uh, pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Subsection A, Subsection six, also known as Purpose Six, um, I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real properties, specifically Forty-One War Street, based on the belief that having such a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body. And also, um, pursuant to, uh, Mass General Law's Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Subsection A, Subsection two, also known as Purpose Two, to enter into executive session to conduct strategy, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the town administrator, um, and we would adjourn from there.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, you're muted.
My friend is here in my lap now, um, my full, like a friend, yes.
Mr. Zulis?
You saw him earlier, yes.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's getting impatient, he knows.
Um, Ms. Collins, yes.